My opinion for Monday, September 28th, 2020 meeting, which was held on Monday. And I'm going to do this in sections because there's quite a few things that happened in this meeting. In fact, this meeting is an essential requirement for anyone in this township to watch. It exposes the mediocrity, the total negligence, the incompetence, and the arrogance of our township supervisors. But not only our supervisors, but the employees that we've hired. A lot of you don't know this, but they fired everyone who worked at the township for long periods of time in the offices, and they put their own people in there. Mostly Granger, John Granger, put his people in there. He hired people that weren't qualified to do the job, and he did that for a purpose. He knew that they would all have to come to him. They would have to, any major decision, everything they didn't know, which is a lot, they had to go to Granger, so he had them controlled totally. And they're still there, pretending to know what they're doing, and I'll point this out to you very soon. So the first, this first section I'm going to talk about is primarily related to the, just the public comments, and then we'll get to some more interesting stuff, okay? So the first public comment in this meeting starts with John Carmelo, and he brings up some very good points. The one I want to focus on where he asked about the Redding Country Club and the HVAC, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. And Mr. Spees makes a very revealing comment. And he says that the quote for the expense for replacing this was four years ago. So this thing needed replaced four years ago. We know that because they went out and they said they got a quote. Four years, nothing was done to our facility. So I want you to keep that in mind. And now they're telling us that the cost is going up from $250,000 to $299,000. And I can assure you, it's going to probably end up being well over $300,000. So I think that we should be going out and getting new quotes because these quotes are four years old. Not only that, the vendor who thinks he's a shoe-in could very well be overstating the expenses because, you know, he thinks he's got the job. He's in, so we should be aware of that. I think it's a nearsighted attitude by the Board of Supervisors. Dave Spees revealed it, four years ago, folks. Four years they've been dragging their feet on this. Now, Dave Spees is in his third year. John Crusaders, I believe, is in his fifth year because he was appointed to the board to fill somebody else's shoes. Probably someone smart enough to realize, I better get out of here. But certainly Crusaders could be held responsible for this delay. You'll never really hear it talked about very often. Spees, Spees wants to keep the township, the Redding Country Club. Crusaders has always been on the side to get rid of it. He wants to sell it to his buddies. So, oh, did I mention, this is my opinion piece. So everything I talk about here is simply my opinion. So that was Mr. Carmelo, and I want to thank you, Mr. Carmelo, for asking these questions. You're one of the few people in the township that is watching what these incompetent supervisors are doing. And you know, as well as I do, how they continue to lie to us, tell us things that the public just takes for granted as the truth. But we're going to reveal some, some things that are actually quite obviously untrue. So I have to wear my glasses with some of this stuff. My, my writing is bad and my eyes are getting old. So, you know, I mentioned in my comments about Service Electric and the contract. They've been dragging their feet on this for years. And in a prior meeting, Mr. Spees said we're losing revenue by not signing a contract. And now in this meeting, you'll hear him say that we're not losing any revenue. So I don't know which one it is. And Bartlett tells us that the Service Electric contract is on the website. But I challenge all of you out there to try to find where this contract is and how we can make comments on it. Because our website is like one of those puzzles that you try to get through. You know, you start in the middle and try to get out. In this case, we, we can't get in. But Bartlett says we're not losing any money. I question that. And the reason why I question that is because I've been a businessman. None of these people really have. Staub will tell you that he is, but some of the things that he says indicate to me that I'm not quite sure of that. But all businesses, what they do is they create new ways of revenue, new programs, new products. So there's no doubt in my mind that Service Electric has done some other thing, maybe just a pure internet, and I'm not sure that we're signed up for that revenue. If I remember correctly, reviewing the two contracts, there are some revenue streams that we're not getting paid the 5% on. Now, these guys, Spees and Bartlett and the rest of the board, they're very ambiguous about this. They can't point to any specifics. And just to make a statement that we're not losing any revenue, I don't buy it. And I hope you don't buy it as well. And as we go through these other things from this meeting, maybe I'll convince you that something very strange is going on here, okay? Also, let's talk about the recycling fees. I brought that up in my comment. And Mr. Crusaders probably made a forty and slip when he said that Mascaro is getting paid all the money. And he said, oh, that's not true. It's not Mascaro, it's Blazinski. Well, it's really funny that he should have that forty and slip. And also, it's amazing how he and the rest of the board use this myopic view of what's going on with recycling. Bartlett doesn't even have the story right. In his long little dissertation in this area, he talks about it went out for bid, then I'm confused if it didn't go out for bid, all these different things. But I can tell you, I was there when it happened. And what happened was in a meeting, we have the video, so if the board wants to dispute it, let me know because I'll provide you the video that approves it. Mr. Granger, our super duper manager, says that he was talking to people who suggested to him that we should go weekly instead of bi-weekly. And he thought it was a good idea. So this wasn't even in the budget, but the board approved it. The board approved it without even really having any conversation about it. So our, and they also said, well, we're not going to tackle on the additional fees for this doubling of the recycling. We'll just, we'll just eat it. We will pay it out of the general fund. The taxpayers won't have to pay it. Well, you know, whose money is in the general fund? It's the taxpayers' money. So right now, you're being charged $20 a year for this recycling. That's going to go up substantially next year if they continue the every week pickup. And I can tell you, it's not necessary. Today is Wednesday. They just did pickup recycling here, and I can tell you, I walked down a couple streets in my, in my neighborhood here, very, very little recycling tubs are out. So that tells me that two, every two weeks is really sufficient. Some people are going to have a little bit more than others. But is it really worth it to go from a little bit over $200,000 a year to over a half a million dollars that we paid Blazinski? And then we also have some other type of recycling fee that I think they said in the video that they pay to the recycling center, which is Mascaro. But what they're not telling you, what they're not telling you is that all these efforts are mandated by the state to do recycling, number one. Number two, the charges that we, the money we paid Blazinski is, should be more negotiable. I think we can get a better deal. Number three, the big, big thing about this is why did we go from every week, from every other week to every week? And my theory is, who benefits, first I ask the question, who really benefits from this? The taxpayers don't benefit because obviously we've just more than doubled our costs on a whim, on, on a, on a whim from John Granger, and then the board passes it even though it's not in the budget. So, so we go from $200,000 to over $500,000 a year. Who benefits? It's very simple. Who's the guy that has the recycling plant? And let me explain this in terms that you can understand because I worked in, I was a financial analyst in manufacturing companies in my younger days. You're always looking to increase your production, lower your cost, and of course, increase your profits. So who does this benefit? So now you have Mascaro's recycling plant waiting every two weeks to get deliveries. Well, that's not efficient, is it? Because my plant operations are going to slow down in that down week. I may have stuff coming in, but not the big stuff. So now, when Granger gets the board to vote over another three, almost $300,000 more that you're going to pay to pick this stuff up every week. So it smoothes out Mascaro's operations. Instead of waiting every two weeks, he's getting it every week, every week. So, and then he recycles it and he sells it. Now they're using this excuse that, well, the recyclable costs have gone down. Well, that's not our problem, okay? It's state mandated. We played, we paid Blazinski to pick it up, and he delivers it to the recycling plant. So what the, what the commodity prices are for this, we can't control it. It's out of our hands. But we can't control two things. We can control when it's, how often it's picked up. And I believe it's only necessary every two weeks. But you're going to hear Crusaders' people come out later after they hear this and say, oh, no, no, we need it every week. Honestly, folks, use your common sense, look at your community, think about it. Now, you might see little buckets out there that are full, but you know, we have the big container. Most people can wait every two weeks. And if they need another container, the township said recently they have hundreds or thousands of these containers. Go get an extra one. But we're wasting our tax dollars to subsidize JP Mascaro's recycling efforts, where he makes the money in the end. So I hope you understand that. I hope I explained it clearly, and you should give it some thought. Now, the last thing in this segment I'm going to talk about is Jennifer Savage, and she answers about the audited financial statements and so forth. And it's interesting because they told us, Lori gets told us in a previous video, that the supervisors don't get to see these comments that we make. But it's pretty clear, they were all prepared to answer all the issues that I raised. Now, they weren't truthful. They tried to tell you how it is from their viewpoint. But I want you to see, they're not working for us. They're working for people like the recycling plant, Blazinski, and others. Jen Savage is working just to keep her job and to prove that she's competent, which in my opinion, she is not. And it's not, it's not only her fault. It's, it's her fault to the extent that she won't resign knowing that she's not qualified to do the job. But then we have the township manager now who should realize that. And we certainly have the supervisors who should be aware that we have a significant employee who's finance director who isn't capable of doing her job. And they keep her on the job nevertheless. Remember, she's the one who said we had a $3.8 million budget surplus. And then we have video later on, which she explains to one of the people out in the audience that asked her, how did they balance the budget? And she said specifically, by taking money from the sewer plant proceeds. So if we had had a 3.8, 3.8 million dollar surplus, there would be no need to take any monies from the sewer plant proceeds to balance the budget. See what I mean? And she's, she's giving us other little tiny lies, but they build up. And this is another one here. So according to Jen Savage, there's no guidelines on the audited statements. That's what she said. And she said she filed the DCED report a little late, but she filed it. Now, the DCED report really cannot be filed until the audited financial statements are completed. She, she made references to doing the budget, and you don't need the audited financial statements. They can use, they're on a cash basis, and the audited financial statements are on an accrual basis. I don't know what gobbledygook talk that is, okay? Because it doesn't make any sense. What you really want to know is what exactly are your expenses? And working on that, you create the new budget. So where's the best source of what your expenses are? Whether it was cash or whether you had to accrue it? It's the expenses that occurred in that month, and the accrual method is the best information to base your budget on. So also, Jennifer Savage said that there is no requirements for audited financial statements, okay? So I have a couple documents here. I'm going to read to you real quick, and then this will end this section of my, my concerns. So, and I'm not going to tell Jennifer where these things are. She's going to have to educate herself, just like I did. But there is a state law for second-class townships, and it states that completion, filing, and publication of annual township report and financial statement. The Board of Auditors. Now, when I mentioned the word the Board of Auditors, the township has two choices. They can create their own Board of Auditors that would do this job, or we can obtain an outside third party, like a CPA firm, to do this work. And it's best, what they, they are doing, they have contracted with a CPA firm, it's Meili. So in place of the Board of Auditors, it's really Meili, our CPA firm. So Meili shall complete their audit settlement and adjustments before the first day of April of each year. B, the Board of Auditors, Meili, shall make a report of the affairs of the township, executing copies of which report shall be filed not later than 90 days after the close of the fiscal year by the auditor, Meili, with the Township Secretary, the clerk of the Court of the County, or the pro bonoary under local rules of court, including the Department of Community Affairs and the Department of Transportation. That's now DECD. Each copy of the report shall be signed by the auditor, the CPA firm, Meili, and duly verified by the auditor. Any auditor who fails to file the township report or to publish the required financial statement commits a summary offense. So this is due 90 days after the, the year-end, and this, these financial statements are used to create the DCED report. Now, it goes on further. There's another section, the last section in this state law, that on or before the 15th day of April of each year, the Secretary of the Township shall publish, once in one newspaper of general circulation in the township, concise financial information prepared or approved by the auditors and consistent with the audited financial statements for total assets, total liabilities, and total net position at year-end, and total revenue, expenses, and changes in that position for the year just ended, and a reference to a place within, within the township where copies of the financial statements and the accompanying auditor's report may be examined. Now, some of you may have seen this from other townships where you see this strip in the, in the Reading Eagle, the newspaper, where they have all their financial data. Well, this township hasn't been doing that. I don't think they did it last year, and obviously, they haven't done it this year because Jen Savage says there's no requirements. But there are, and you noted, I said, that audited financial statements. If the auditor, Meili, that we pay quite a bit of money to, are reviewing and auditing our financial information every year, and then they provide a, their comments on those audited financial statements, they are something that is used for DCED, and they are required. I'm reading it here right now, Jennifer Savage. So wake up, learn your job, or quit. So full financial statements and the accompanying auditor's report. So there you have it. And this concludes Section 1 of my, my comments and opinions on this particular meeting. I'll be back in a moment to talk about the next portion of this meeting. Section 2 of the September 28th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. I cut it into two sections because I had to do some research and some writing. Again, this is a, a meeting that exposes the incompetence and the lack of knowledge of not only our supervisors and the way they handle things, but also of our new manager and the employees in the office. It's, it's just crazy what's going on here. So before I go through this next opinion piece, I want to read something to you. It's common, it's out there, it's part of the state's regulations enumerating the duties of the supervisor of a second-class township. And I don't think any of our supervisors have really read this because I think if they did, they would behave, be behaving differently. But related to the topics and the material that I'm going to cover now with my opinion piece, these are relevant, and you should make note of them. In Section 607, Duties of the Supervisor. The Board of Supervisors shall be charged with the general governance of the township and the execution of legislative, executive, and administrative powers, like approving zoning variances and such, in order to ensure, listen to this, in order to ensure sound fiscal management and to secure the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the township. So based on what we know, what's happened the last two to five years, this has to open up a whole new thought in your mind about what's going on. You know, how could we have supervisors that never paid their taxes? How could we have supervisors, former supervisors, that get special things done by PennDOT? How can we have a supervisor still on the board who gets a $9,000 donation from our fire department? I'm sorry, our fire company, that's the social quarters. You know, what are, what other perks are they getting that we're not aware of? Well, there are others, but I can't talk about those right now. So also, when you think about our sewer plant, what happened to it? When you look at our town, our Redding Country Club, the golf course and, and the clubhouse, food and beverage, and, and our parks that are, are in disorganization, their second duty, besides ensuring sound fiscal management. And this will come in important when we talk about the accounts receivable. But what about this? Their second responsibility, they have the responsibility for maintenance of township-owned equipment and facilities. So ask yourself, has this board, and has the previous board, and the board before them, have they done their job? And I think if you're knowledgeable about what's going on here, you'll come to the same conclusion than I have. They haven't done their job. John Crusaders has been on the board for five years. David Spees, this is his third year, and he was the manager of the golf course for a year. These people are now controlling our township, and they have no concept of how to develop plans, how to manage money. They're on the board for various reasons. Crusaders just wants to promote himself. You'll see it all the time. Oh, boy. You'll see it all the time. He promotes himself. Mr. Spees, Mr. Staub, Mr. Gaultier, they're there primarily for the golf course. You'll see it, since they've been on the board, everything for the golf course has been voted on, never a debate. We'll talk about the Kubota tractor in this, in a few moments. So here you have it, the first two, the first two requirements of a supervisor to basically ensure sound fiscal management. Second, to maintain our, our property and our equipment. So with that said, let's move on to some of my comments related to what went on in this meeting on September 28th. And the first thing I want to talk about is the sewer account. Oh my God, can you believe this? If you look, and they put this in the, on the website very late, might have even been after the meeting because I hadn't seen it. Sewer accounts receivable balance, okay? Now, this is the taxpayers' money. This is the township's money. We are owed over $1.7 million, and it grows with the, with the fines every month. Now, no one has ever talked about the dollar amount. They've made reference to it in meetings, but that's about it. So they basically hid very significant financial information from the township and, and its residents. But can you imagine if you had a business? I mean, look at some of this stuff. Five to six years old, over $397,000 that are, we are owed. Four to six years, that's the period. Crusaders, Vanderland, and Granger, they arrived and started running the township. $455,000 that we are owed. If you add up the current, current one year to seven years outstanding, it's over $1.2 million we are owed. I have some notes here on, on, on the, the meeting, what these people are saying. There's no excuse for this. This is just financial negligence. It's negligence on the part of the Board of Supervisors. It was negligence on the part of the previous manager. And we're not just talking about Granger now. We have to include Clarence Hamm in this. He was getting an extra $1,000 a month to be the township manager. So he has to be held responsible for this as well. So there's also all kinds of things going on here. And this is the first time we learn of the extent of the receivables. This is just, this is just unexpected, unacceptable. It is something that we cannot excuse them from. The supervisors start talking about, oh, the debtors, they haven't paid, well, you know, they owe us the money. We've been subsidizing them, some of them for 10 years. The chicken processing plant, that's the big one for over $120,000. But why haven't they closed on that? Taken them to court? And they don't seem to know how to force collections. You can factor these accounts. Sell them to somebody else. Maybe we get, you know, 70 cents on the dollar, depending on how collectible they are. But, you know, we have to weigh that against what we're going to spend to put all these liens and, and take them into the, you know, court, like our new solicitor says. At least our new solicitor has an idea of what to do. Where was Fox and Rothschild in the last four or five years where they were ripping us off for millions of dollars, creating scenarios that, you know, didn't have to exist? It's mind-boggling, you know? And it goes back to what I read about what the township supervisor's responsibilities are. Sound fiscal management, okay? Now, I'm looking at this accounts receivable. Now, looking at this accounts receivable, does it make sense that we have, aged over 7 years, $1.2 million that is outstanding in accounts receivable? Is that fiscal responsibility to you? Imagine if you were running a business. Would you allow your customers to stiff you for 10 years? At the 10-year-plus mark, there's $162,000 outstanding. 5 to 7 years, $398,000. It's outrageous. And our supervisors, Mr. Staub, Mr. Gaultier, Mr. Spees, they're talking about how they don't want to be too hard on these scofflaws. Basically, they, I think one of the people said that some of these, they've never made payments on at all. So, you know, you have to take a motion out of this. The supervisors can't seem to do that. They always want to give everybody a break. I mean, I think they're in the wrong business. There's a lot of charities out there that they would be fantastic working for. But the township is not a charity. It's a business. And the business is running the township and its facilities and maintaining as low a tax base as possible for the residents. Now, not collecting over $1.7 million in accounts receivable doesn't help any of us. We have to make up for that. That increases our budget. Because we have to make up for what they're, what other people are using. We're subsidizing them. So, in my professional experience as an accountant, and it tells me that Jennifer Savage doesn't have the experience. She doesn't understand what to do. That's why this is on the agenda. And they're looking to the lawyers on how to do this. This should be something that's taken care of behind the scenes, but she doesn't know how to do it. So, I think you see the problem we have here. Fiscal mismanagement. And it's a summary offense, by the way. So, again, no excuse. I think Bartlet made some very good comments. Listen to the meeting. I agree with everything that he says. We shouldn't be handling these debtors with kid gloves, especially the big ones. They made it obvious. They're not going to pay us. They think they're going to get away with it. And they still may get away with it. I mean, these guys are talking about maybe forgiving some of these debts or forgiving the fines, the 5% fee. You know, the township residents are losing money by subsidizing this. Hey, give me a $1.7 million loan for free. I'll take it. And with the prospect of maybe never having to pay it, right? So, I think Bartlet understands how ridiculous the supervisors' comments were. And that's why he mentioned how, you know, we need to go after the big debtors very aggressively. And I agree with him. But in the end, this accounts receivable issue is not obscene. It's incompetent, it's negligent. And I'm going to see if I can push for malfeasance. Because I can't imagine the excuse that these supervisors can give us for having this outstanding debt, especially Spees and Casadis. They've been on a board for years. You will not find one thing in the minutes. And according to Mr. Casadis, the minutes are the record of their business. But you also see in the videos, never a mention of these outstanding amounts, ever. And they started, Jennifer Savage, I think, admits that they only started looking at this when they decided to sell the sewer plant. She says that in the video. So, she admits that they haven't even made this an issue until they decided to sell the sewer plant. So, a lot of them, imagine that. $1.7 million that could have gone towards maintaining the sewer plant, which, as I read to you, their second responsibility is to maintain our facilities. And yet, they, in their own words, they admit they allowed the sewer plant to run down. If that's true, that's their false narrative, I claim they made. But here's $1.7 million that could have been used to maintain our plant. Do you see, folks? I'm showing you how incompetent they are. And they try to cut us off. Right now, we can't go to public meetings. And they'll keep us out of the meetings as long as they can. They love COVID-19 as far as it goes with separating us from them. But they can't separate their stupidity. They can't hide their incompetence. This is a very serious issue. $1.7 million. And you can find this under the agendas. Go to the most recent meeting date, which is September 28th. It's the last file in there. And look at this, read it, and weep. Because this is outrageous. And this is how we, taxpayers, get ripped off. If I seem a little upset about it, that's because I am. I can't stand financial incompetence. And that's what we have here, across the whole board. Now, more on recycling. You heard earlier where it was my comments about recycling, and they all jumped on it, and they had their own opinions, right? Well, and then we have more information here from Bartlet, who thinks he understands what happened. And Jeff, you have no idea what you're talking about here, okay? We didn't go out and bid for weekly recycling. That's not true. And if you doubt me, go look at my videos, okay? We have a video on, and I explained this earlier, where Granger just upped and upped and said, "Well, people have come to me and said that we should be doing it weekly instead of biweekly." And everybody jumped on the bandwagon, because I think it was pre-planned. "Oh, yes, let's do it weekly." So, they voted to do it weekly. It was never bidded out, Jeff, weekly. I can tell you that. I can show you that. I have the evidence, okay? So, it's not true that it came, Spees says, "Well, we only had 1 option." That is not true. And the option that we actually should have adopted was to continue doing what we're doing, collecting every 2 weeks, and that would be it. We paid a little bit over $200,000 a year while we were collecting every 2 weeks. Now, we're paying well over a half a million dollars, all right? So, I won't argue with Jeff on whether the costs have increased or when we last increased the charges to the taxpayers. That's an evaluation that should be done. Financial evaluation by the Director of our Finance Department, Jennifer Savage, if she could do that. What is the real cost to us? What should it be? What's the most economical way to collect these recyclables? You know, at the least expense to the taxpayer. And my position is, it's biweekly. And yes, we should get a bid on the separate things, the collection and then the processing. And my opinion, I think we should try to cut out Mascaro and find another recycling source and see what we could do. In fact, we should not move forward until we have 3 identified recycling sources and find out what that's going to cost us, the taxpayer, all right? Not Blazinski, he's going to have to take it, if he gets the contract to collect again, he's going to have to take it to wherever the processing plant is. That's on him. We had 1 bidder, that might have been true. Because I remember when we bidded this thing out, they had, you know, 1 bidder, the way they did it, we had 3 bidders. 1, of course, was Blazinski. 1 was some garbage collection company in another county. And then the 3rd one was a name where they said they didn't receive the bid from that person. So, that's not a bid at all. So, I think it was managed. I think that we, the foregone conclusion was Blazinski was going to get it, and that was it. And Mascaro was going to get his benefit, which they claim, seem to have myopic eyes on this. They don't understand that this was all to even out his manufacturing process, his processing of recyclables. Instead of waiting every 2 weeks, he was getting it every week. And look, that costs you, taxpayer. If you're watching this video, I want you to understand, this is the ripoff. So, because Bartlet mentions the ripoff, and he said there is no ripoff. But there is a ripoff. And it has to do with the frequency of collecting the recyclables and the fact that we really only had 1 bidder. We didn't have a choice. So, and the way they're talking about this recycling process, Bartlet says, "Well, we haven't done it for years. We haven't reviewed the real cost." Well, this looks like a tax increase, folks. And what did they tell us when they sold us the dilapidated, non-salvageable sewage plant? That money would be ensured that there are no tax increases for years, right? Don't hold your breath. Okay, that's enough on the recycling. Now, let's talk about the Kubota tractor, okay? First of all, the golf season's almost over. I don't know that we should be spending $30,000 on a tractor right now. This doesn't make sense to me. If I was reviewing all this stuff, it's a real want. It's not a need, okay? Ask, "Is this a need?" No, we have a tractor. And what does the guy say? He says, "Well, you know, it needs new tires." And that would be $4,000, okay? So, instead of spending $4,000 to make it work through the rest of the season and maybe next, part of next season, he wants to spend $30,000, okay? "Oh, but wait a minute. It's not budgeted to buy it for $30,000." Jen Savage claims it's in the budget as being financed. Now, I don't know if it is or not. I couldn't find it. It doesn't look like it is. They often tell us things that are not true. And after an investigation, we find out that they're not true. But let's take her word for it right now. It's being financed. So, but wait a minute. We, our budget is blown up because of COVID-19. Instead of spending, we should be foregoing spending until things normalize. So, again, it's a want or a need. This is not a need, this is a want. So, I say, if it needs new tires, put some new tires on it. Because they can, they can be salvageable. If they're 4K, and we part out the tractor or whatever, we'll get our money, some of our money back. But 30K in a time of budget issues? I think it's a mistake. I think it's a real mistake. Somewhere in this dialogue about the Kubota tractor, even Casadis admits he made a mistake, which is very weird. I think he's trying to salvage his reputation, but maybe there are other things on his mind that we can't talk about. So, then they talk about what could it be used for other purposes, like, you know, outside of the golf course. Well, this raises another issue, you know? If you get certain weeds and seeds in the tires, and then they come back and you put them in the golf course, then you have contamination. It's a minor issue, but it can happen. So, I think, you know, and here you go. You're going to have Spees, and you're going to have Staub, and you're going to have Gaultier are going to support this purchase, because it's the golf course. And these 3 guys are focused on 1 thing, the golf course. They only think about the things that influence their desires, their needs, not the needs of this township. So, here you have it. They went ahead anyway. Instead of putting, instead of thinking about it, they went ahead, and they're ordering this tractor anyway. They made a motion, they're going to do it. Come hell or high water, it's going. And Spees earlier had made a comment about keeping it for parts. But then, someone said, "Well, no, let's sell it on, sell it." And they passed a motion to sell it. So, it's not useful for us, but apparently, somebody else might buy it. I just think you could see here the lack of financial acumen. You know, they're not very smart. They're not thinking clearly. With a busted budget, it's crazy to spend this. But they've gone ahead, and they've done it. They're planning on buying it. So, again, I want you to remember Spees, Staub, and Casadis, all golf course-related. These guys should not be allowed to vote on this stuff. They got a clearance from the Ethics Commission. However, I questioned what they submitted to the Ethics Commission. I read it, and they should be concerned. All right. That's the Kubota tractor that we're buying, that we should not be buying. HVAC, oh, boy, I'll tell you. Again, going back to 2 things. The first 2 things that are enumerated in the state statute for second-class township supervisors. Fiscal management and also maintaining our facilities. It's very clear, it's specified, it's specific. It's not vague. It's not vague at all. So, what we find out here, as you listen to the meeting, they went out and got this quote 4 years ago. "Some of the work was done, but then it stopped." 4 years ago. This is our, this is why our facilities are run down. So, now, instead of $250,000, which they put in the budget for 2020, and I guess they didn't bother to find out if the prices went up, because now they're saying it's going to cost us, rounded off, $300,000. Because the price is 4 years old. This is, this, everyone has to laugh at this, I think, before you cry. Because there's no excuse for this. Why wait 4 years? We spent the money on getting the bid, and apparently, they did some preliminary work. They don't tell us what that is, but they, Bartlet told us that they still owe us some stuff, some work that we paid them for, okay? We paid them for some work that they didn't provide us with yet. 4 years ago, all right? And, you know, it's, I could say a lot of things about this. This is the last topic I'm going to talk about. But it's just aggravating. And I hope the citizens of this township get a better idea of how incompetent they are. Spees and Casadis have been on this for, Spees for 3 years now, Casadis for 5 years. And they're in charge, and it's finally coming up. But it shows you, they were doing nothing. They were focused on selling our plant, getting that money so that they could buy the promenade. And now, they're going to, can you imagine if they can't handle these things in an expeditious way? What's it going to be like with this contractor here? Now, if you look at our budget, they have budgeted for this year and the next 2 years over $20,000, 20, I'm sorry, not 20,000, $20 million to spend on beginning to get the promenade up to building, the buildings they want to put up there. And I say that's understated. Just like, if this was $250,000, now it's $300,000. I guarantee you, that promenade isn't going to be $20 million. It's going to be closer to $40 million. And they may even sell our current buildings and take that money and build the cross-town connector. Because I've heard rumors about that. And that's ridiculous. They're wasting our money, folks, because they have no one watching what they're doing. There's no accountability. They do whatever they want. Because you are not doing your job. You need to contact them. You need to get involved in the meetings. They're only an hour or an hour and a half long most of the time. You need to, and you don't even have to go there. Just watch it on YouTube now and send in your complaints and your concerns. Not just to the supervisors, because they're just going to laugh at you. You've got to send them in to the District Attorney's Office. All right, the District Attorney's Office. Now, many of these things now, you might say, "Well, they're not breaking law." But there are, when we could prove that they violated the fiscal management or the lack of maintaining our facilities, what we could do is what's called a summary judgment. And we could go after them, believe it or not. They don't think so, but it's possible. So, finally, I want to close this opinion piece for September 28th. And I want to just conclude with the fact that we- uh, just conclude with the fact that we have a manager who's green. I think he overstated his experience and his abilities. He's not a real good communicator. He's not, uh, aware of the Ethics Commission laws. I doubt that he's aware of the second-class township laws, uh, specifically the supervisors' duties. But in general, the, the supervisors themselves have a very myopic view of how to manage our township. And they refuse, they, in fact, they become indignant if people like me or like Mr. Carmelo and others, uh, suggest that there might be something else, another way to do it. They become very indignant, and we know like Crusaders, he's attacked over a dozen people that I know that are friends of mine, he's attacked me numerous occasions. He constantly attacks Michelle Kircher, we have it on video. It's there for everyone to see. So they have a myopic view on things. They can't seem to solve problems, and that's what they should be doing. We have old problems that keep becoming older and older. We have new problems that are showing up, but they can't solve the problems. It goes on and on and on. For example, the bed and breakfast issue. Something like two and a half years. The noise ordinance over two years. Look at our accounts receivable, ten years. And we have one point seven million dollars in accounts receivable. When I worked for Raytheon, I also worked with a gentleman who was in charge of accounts receivable. He was a total expert, I learned so much from him, and he had an impeccable rate of collections. The auditors would come in, talk, sit down, talk to him, look at the records, and that was it, because they knew he was an impeccable individual when it came to managing accounts receivable. And that's what it's all about, folks, managing it, and you can see they didn't manage it at all. So, no problem solving and no follow-through. Mr. Carmelo, I believe, made comments about why aren't you giving us an update on all these other programs every meeting? So maybe at the, you could say, well, here, here are all the issues that are outstanding. Uh, nothing else has happened, is, there's nothing else to report on this and this and this, but here is the update on this subject, but they don't do that. There's no follow-through, they don't keep it in front of them to know what they're doing. Then there's a lack of candor. We could see this in this meeting, we could see how they treat people who make comments. Now this one was a, a little more subdued than most. It's obvious they looked at my comments so that they could prepare to answer them before, uh, it was heard, uh, which they, I were told that doesn't happen, but I, I know they did that, otherwise they wouldn't have been prepared. But you can look at previous, uh, videos where they attack us, they've attacked Carmelo, they've attacked other individuals who questioned things. So, uh, there's no candor on this board. They're dishonest. Absolutely dishonest, they'll tell you whatever they need to tell you to subdue your concerns. And then finally, the inexperience. Uh, I've already went over the back, uh, the, the basic backgrounds of each individual on the board. And just merely being inexperienced in government isn't, isn't a terrible thing, but these people do no homework. They, they rely on, on their front office, the administration, and their new manager, who I think is not as experienced as he claims he is, because these supervisors are not prepared. Absolutely not prepared, and you can tell by the long discussions that occur. They're not looking at the information, they're not digging deeper themselves to understand the issues. It's just not happening. Inexperience. So, these are my opinions, and I hope that, uh, even if you may not agree with me, uh, you can, uh, arrive at your own conclusions. I just wanted to point out the things that I see and the little issues, uh, the little facts behind the scenes that you may not be aware of, because I spend a lot of time looking at all of them, I'm very familiar with what's going on here. And, uh, I respect anyone that has, uh, opinions that differ from mine. It's important, but for the, keep in mind that I have the best interest of the community in mind. That's why I do these. I hope you enjoyed my opinion piece, I hope you watch this video of the meeting on September twenty eighth, because it is very revealing. Thank you. I thought I would add a little levity into this presentation, uh, because I think it's necessary. And when you read Dilbert and what's going on in this cartoon, you have to wonder if it's not also going on, it must be going on in our township government. How could you have one point seven million dollars in accounts receivable? The bulk of it, you know, four to seven years old, and this is the first we've heard about these amounts. Oh, they've mentioned it, but they never talked about the amounts. So could this happen here in Exeter government? That they are reporting many things where they are omitting important context? You bet they are. And I'm trying to reveal this to you, to show you the dark side of our government. And right now, we've got two people, Spees and Crusaders, who are leading the charge on continuing to maintain, uh, this, uh, uh, keeping things invisible to us because of their own specific personal agendas. I hope you enjoyed this cartoon, uh, I hope you'll take a, a moment to reflect on what I'm saying and what the cartoon says. And let's continue with our, uh, opinion piece and, and viewing the, uh, the video of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty Township Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thanks, Laurie. Like to call the order, the Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting of the Board of Supervisors? Please rise. My allegiance?
Agence.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, which is standing across as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Oh, should we go out here? Here. Ms. Kircher?
Here.
Mr. Crusaders?
Here.
Mr. Staub?
Here.
And I am here, Mr. Spees. Dave Spees. Um, public comments, Laurie, do we have, uh, comments on agenda items?
Yes, we do. First one is from, there are two, uh, the first one is from John Carmelo.
Authorization to proceed with HVAC repairs to the Reading Country Club, black small square. The total cost of repairs is two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, et cetera. At the July thirteenth board meeting, manager Bartlett said cost would be in the neighborhood of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Now the cost is two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Is this a firm number or another guesstimate? Is there not to exceed clause in the proposal? Where exactly in the budget is the money allocated for this project?
Is that the end of that one, Laurie?
It was the end, yes.
Jeff, I mean, I think I talked to Jeff about this one, I mean, and Clarence, I mean, it's, we had a four-year-old estimate. We've been knowing this was gonna fail sooner or later, we don't think it's gonna make the winner. Um, so the estimate that we were quoting was about four years old. You know, there's a very detailed, I think, work that was done recently. A unit has to be taken apart, put up in the attic, a lot of stuff has to be done. It's gonna take almost two months of work. So I think this is a firm quote, but Clarence or Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, that's correct. It's correct, yeah. We can talk about that a little bit more, uh, when we, um, get to that item, it's the last item of new business. We go into the number of details a little more at that point.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Next one is from David Hughes, and this is a voicemail, I will play that. Um, just a couple seconds delay so that I can block out his phone number.
Okay.
I'd like to leave a comment for the, uh, uh, items on the agenda. The first one I'd like to talk about is the recycling issue. This, this is an issue that, uh, really takes advantage of our residents. You've more than doubled the recycling fees from maybe two hundred thousand dollars a year to over half a million dollars a year. And all this does benefit the, uh, JP Muscau recycling, uh, business. And at the detriment and the underwriting of it by retention residents. Uh, also, you're going to begin the budget process, but it looks like they're going to begin the budget process before you review and release the audited financial statements. These statements are normally due by April first of every year for the previous year. This, this has been, uh, too long for these statements not to be completed and released. Uh, we have to question, uh, what the township supervisors and administration are doing, because one of the basic fundamental reasons for audited financial statements is timeliness. So if you get these statements almost a year after the, the statements, uh, were due or after the year was over, they, they become less useful. But they are useful for setting the budget, so I'd like to go, if you're going to be reviewing and approving those and allowing the township residents to comment on them. Uh, also, uh, that is the end of my, uh, comments on the agenda, oh, one other thing, service electric. You, it's not on, it's not on the agenda, you keep pushing it out, we keep losing revenue. This is, uh, really, uh, an issue that the residents of this township should be aware of. Uh, I've got it on my notes and things that we're going to report to the state and local authorities. Uh, it is absolutely negligent on the part of supervisors not to handle this immediately. And there are so many other issues, I don't even have time to address them, uh, for this, for these agenda items. Thank you.
Alrighty, um. Jeff, I'd like to get you to comment, but I mean, service electric, we're not losing any revenue. The old contract is in place until we replace it with a new agreement. So I don't, you know, understand anything that unless there was a dramatic change in number of subscribers going up, and actually it's been going down, so we're probably getting more revenue than we would be, but. Jeff, do you have any comment on that one?
The, uh, the service electric agreement currently right now is out on the website, um, with a, a number of questions and answers, uh, for the public. Um, or we put that out there to provide information to all the residents after that last, um, meeting that was held, uh, the, the town hall type style meeting. Um, we generated a list of questions and answered them. Um, I don't believe we've ever received any comments back from the public at this time. Um, we will be putting it on the agenda, uh, hopefully for the next meeting, um, provided we don't get in, a huge influx of new information or comments. Uh, Dave, you are correct, uh, the old agreement is in place right now, and I think, um, year to date, we are pretty much right in line with what we should be receiving. The old agreement and the new agreement both call for a five percent, um, commission on the cable services. Very little is going to change from the one contract to the other. Um, so, it, it, yes, it, it has not been approved at this point, but we are not losing money, um, as it's been stated.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, and I think the recycling, a large portion of our recycling bill this year is being paid to Bolinsky, not to Muscaro.
It's all Muscaro, Dave.
I thought Bolinsky picks up our recycling.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's all Blazinski, you're right.
Yeah.
It's not Muscaro.
There are two bills that we pay. There is the recycling bid for the collection, that is to A.J. Blazinski. There is also processing of materials, which is paid to Total Recycle.
Right. Thanks, Jen, but I mean, the, the pickup.
Blazinski's the large bill, yes. He's wrong on the, uh, Muscaro piece, Blazinski's picking it up, not Muscaro.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, and Jen, I don't know if you wanna comment on the budget process, I know we have the DCE, DCED report, that was, uh, issued back in April or May, you know, or I think early May. Um, the final of the other financial statement, I don't know if we have a timeline on that.
Sure, I can give an update on that. Uh, the DCED is the financial report that is due by, uh, April first each year. Um, ours was filed, uh, slightly late this year, it was filed a little bit after April, but DCED did state that they will not be, um, enforcing any, any, um, you know, issues with that because of COVID. We had to file right around the time that COVID hit, so, um, that was filed in a timely manner. There is no guideline for when you have to file or if you even have to file audited financial statements in second-class township code. We do a, an audited financial statement every year and have for many years, but there is no guidelines in the code as to when it has to be filed. The auditors are working on it, I actually received a draft on Friday of the audit. The, the issue this year has been first COVID, the auditors were working at home, and we were working at home for a period of time, which caused a lag in things. And this is also the first year that we're implementing the rest of GAZB thirty-four, the fixed asset, the capital asset piece. Uh, we will actually be including our capital assets in our financials this year and our audited financials. So there's been a bit of going back and forth between the township, the auditors, and the fixed asset valuation vendor that we use to come up with the correct numbers and the correct, um, pieces of information that need to be included in the audited financials. So, um, that's been a little bit of a back and forth to get the exact information that we need, that the auditors can utilize. Um, it was a giant undertaking for the auditors to kind of change up our financial statements and include the capital assets. So that added a lot of time to the auditor's piece. So again, they sent me a draft Friday, the M D N A needs to be filled out. We're hoping that after they do their final Q and A, we can have it approved sometime, probably the second meeting in October, the first meeting in November. Um, addressing the budget issue, we actually don't use the audited financial statements to do budgeting. The audited financial statements are on accrual basis. We budget on a cash basis, which is what we produce in the treasurer's report each month. So the two are, are generally, are mostly independent of each other. Uh, we are budgeting on a cash basis and the financials are on a, on an accrual basis.
Thanks, Jen. Perfect, any other comments? That was it for public comments, Laurie?
So that was, Mr. Hughes submitted two voicemails. Um, the second one, he was, he mentioned in it that it's for non-agenda items, but he does talk about an agenda item in it. So I think that I should play it now, just to avoid, I, I wouldn't want to play it after the agenda item has already been discussed.
Okay.
Decided upon, so I'm gonna play his other comment now. Um, if you want me to play it again for his general comment at the end, you can just let me know.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, my name is David Hughes, this is the second part for the, uh, September twenty eighth meeting, non-agenda items. And what I wanna do is talk about in general a few things. And the first thing is actually something that's on the agenda item, and that's, uh, to approve the Reading Country Club HVAC system. Now, the budget says you've allocated two hundred fifty thousand dollars in total for repairs for the year. This exceeds the total repairs for the, uh, the building. And what it tells me is you anticipated only doing the HVAC system and no other repairs for this building, which is questionable. Uh, in fact, you have, uh, uh, items that, uh, are behind schedule. The audited financial statements, the handling of the tenants of the building at the promenade, uh, sewer facility, what you did with that, a partial disrepair of the current municipal building. So you have a, you have a whole list of issues that need to be resolved. Thank you.
All right, yeah, we could address that one at the HVAC, I did go back, uh, I think prior to the last meeting, I made a comment. But yeah, there was capital improvement of the Reading Country Club clubhouse for two hundred fifty thousand, I believe, is in there. But if you go back to the minutes of the budget meeting, sometime early October, maybe the eleventh, I'm not sure of the date. Uh, there were three items on there, one was two thirty for the HVAC, and there was twenty thousand for, you know, possible windows, and that wasn't it, and there was twenty thousand for something else, and there were multiple items on there, but there's. There were multiple items on there, but there's, I recall 230 for the HVAC system. As we said earlier, that was a quote from four years ago. We're now working with them. We know it has to be done. There is some additional work that's needed that, and I think Jeff explained in the agenda here, that that will be budgeted for next year and paid out of 2021. So, any other comments, Jeff?
No, that's all of it.
Okay, any comments from anyone else?
As you said, that's correct. It was about 230 last year.
Yeah.
For the budget.
And that was the best estimate we had because we weren't doing it at that time. We knew we couldn't, so we had a.
Correct.
Couldn't.
Well, you have more for next year to complete the, ah, that, correct?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, the remainder will be budgeted for next year.
And then that should be all that will be put in it, am I correct?
That's my understanding, right, Jeff?
Yes, as far as the HVAC, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, regular approvals, minutes, September 14th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes for September 14th, 2020.
Okay.
Is that it, Joe?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Eyes have it. Disbursement, September 28th, 2020.
I move to approve the dispersment, so September 28th, 2020, as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion, Jen? I think Joe had a few questions that you were going to review.
Yep, Jen, go ahead.
One second, I had to unmute myself. The first is a bill payable to the Berks County Industrial Development Authority for approximately $76,000. This is for the TIF financing of Exeter Commons. It's the TIF loan payment for Exeter Commons, which is a joint loan between the county, the school district, and the township for the road and traffic improvements that were done when the Exeter Common Shopping Center was completed. This loan matures in 2027, and it is funded by the tax payments that the owner of the property pays. We had a solicitor bill for Hartman Valeriano of about $6,500. There were general issues of about $4,000. There was a tax appeal for some properties in the township of about $400. Some property subdivision work, about $300, and labor issues, $1,000, and a right-to-know appeal of $800 approximately. Landis Mechanical, there was a $12,500 bill for library AC. It was a new HVAC unit for the Exeter Community Library Building.
Thanks, Jen. Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions from anyone? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Treasurer's report for August 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, August 2020, subject to audit.
Second it.
Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, Dave, I'd ask Jen if she would mind explaining some of the future expenses for the community, and also to just touch base on the consulting, the, if whether or not we're going to reallocate that engineering $413,000. So Jen, if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. The capital fund, there are $4.8 million of future expenses. Those are for the Perkyomen Avenue construction project. I'm not sure we're actually going to be spending that this year because I'm not sure we're going to get to construction in this year. But when we did the budget last year, I believe we were under the impression that construction may start late this year. So that will probably move to 2021. In conjunction with that, you were talking about the consulting fees that are under the engineering section. Those are actually budgeted in that $4.8 million. So we'll be moving those fees and any future fees for engineering work on the Perkyomen Ave project, which are payable to McMahon and Associates to the capital fund. So you'll see those in September move out of the general fund and move into the capital fund. Parks and Recreation, there's about $1 million of future expenses. That was under the impression that we were going to receive some park grant funding. I believe it was through DCNR last year. We did not receive that grant funding, so those improvements to, I believe it was Pineland and Farming Ridge Parks, did not happen this year. Laurie and Clarence and Will worked very hard on doing a grant for next year, hopefully, that we have submitted to DCNR and DCED to do the same improvements. Those would be matching actually against each other, so maybe we would be spending less money. So that, again, those future expenses may move to 2021, depending on how we think the grant is going to go. We've not heard word yet on that grant. Waste Water Treatment Fund, there's $12 million of future expenses shown there. The $10 million of that is to establish the OPEB fund. That was part of the financial RFP that we did, I think, late last year that needs to kind of be revived and worked on over the next couple of months. But again, we had $10 million for the other post-employment benefits funds that we were looking to establish to pay for benefits, healthcare benefits for retirees in the future. And there was also a sewer debt payment of $2 million in there as well.
Thanks, Jen, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen. Any other comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving to unfinished business, consider authorizing closure of the Butter Lane Bridge. Jeff or Joe, guess who's going to?
I can explain this project. This is the bridge that's on Butter Lane, that's right by Harvey Avenue Bridge. It's recently been having structural difficulties, structural problems. The bridge is on the MBIS program where PennDOT inspects it and then provides us a list of all the deficiencies and associated costs to bring the bridge up to its current standard. And Clarence, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're about $100,000 worth of repairs for this bridge. We looked at removing the. You're probably right. We did look at the removal of the structure because of the structural deficiencies. We had several meetings with the appropriate utility companies, including UGI, PA American. The utilities that are currently attached to that bridge are no longer in operation. They can be actually removed. We did secure a permit from DEP, which was issued from DEP's office late November of 2019. The township received a copy early December of 2019, so that we're permitted to remove the structure. This evening, what we'd like to do is have a motion from the board to close the bridge structure, including installing appropriate barricades necessary to prohibit any traffic from utilizing the road. And then our next step would be to eventually remove that bridge structure. We do have right-of-way in that area, and then we would need to do some modifications at that point once that structure is removed, whether we want to keep the land or vacate the portion of Butter Lane. And that's something that can be discussed at another time. Harvey is, as you know, has been replaced, I believe, back in 2018. It was reopened. It was widened to allow for a turning lane, and also we were able to get PennDOT to pay for some widening along Butter Lane so that in the future, if we need to do a turning lane, that we'd have sufficient width to allow for movement so that the traffic can then utilize Harvey and no longer needs to utilize the Butter Lane Bridge. So this evening, we're looking for a motion from the board to allow us to proceed with the posting and the closure of the Butter Lane Bridge, including the proper signage and barricades in accordance with Publication 213 from PennDOT.
I have a question, please, Jeff.
Sure.
Should we spend on it to reopen, to open it, and let me just put all those changes in a few years ago?
We haven't spent anything on that in probably four years.
By it to four, it was probably, I don't remember when they were, but we stayed on for a long time getting fixed.
I know, Harvey, we spent money several years ago to keep the bridge in operation because PennDOT determined that there was a structural member that was failing. Therefore, we had to install those temporary Jersey barriers to allow for a school bus to still maintain usage of that bridge structure. Then we were fortunate that we did have the bridge, I think it was an 80/20 split where the township, and correct me if I'm wrong, Clarence, I think it was, we paid 10% or 15% and the county.
15.
15, I think the county picked up the five, and then the 80% was paid by PennDOT and with Harvey. But best of my knowledge, Butter Lane, we haven't done anything except for the permitting and utility coordination.
Yeah, they've been giving us with all kinds of repairs for the Butter Lane Bridge for years, and we've been putting them off because we knew once Harvey was built, we were going to be taking the Butter Lane Bridge down because of its age. It continues to sink, and it's always clogging up underneath there with so, you know, with the spoils. It's just not a good bridge to, we're better off just moving on. The Harvey Bridge has a much better sight vision coming from both ways. If you're on Bingham Street, you can see a much better coming off of Harvey than you can pulling out of the Butter Lane one.
It's going to prevent that.
It's a safer bridge altogether.
You currently have that skew that just is not real conducive to driving and visibility.
I just thought we'd put more money into it. I'm fine with what you're doing, I just don't want to scare a lot of money thrown away.
So Clarence, just to clarify, is this going to be down there for good or we will replace?
No, 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 it's gone. We just, we'll put some Jersey barriers up for this winter, and then at some point, we, there's no rush to tear it down, but we definitely should tear it down at some point.
Okay.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to authorize the closure of the Butter Lane Bridge.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Joe, is that enough, or did you need the additional verbiage as far as barriers and things of that nature?
I think the motion's sufficient to close the road. We're obligated to make sure we put the proper barriers and signage that's necessary to warn motorists that that bridge is no longer prohibited to be.
Director, thank you.
Very good, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number two, unfinished business, discussion of township engineer RFP responses and selection. If you recall, earlier this year, I think in January, we put an RFP out for several different external support systems. One was the engineer solicitor and also traffic planning. This is the one for the engineer. Jeff, you have any comments on this or?
At the time, the board put out, as you said, a number of requests for proposal. This one was issued February 20th, and responses were due by March 20th. Township received them, and I believe at the time, they were forwarded on to the board members for your review. I believe there are, I believe, at least four, maybe five proposals that were received. I think it's incumbent upon the board to take some type of action. At the time, it did not appear that the board would, after reviewing the applications, that they were interested in making any changes to the current engineering services being provided. So it would be, just by a motion, if the board does not want to take any further action, just to state that no action will be taken on the request for proposal and authorized manager just to notify these companies that they're, at this point, that nothing is moving forward on the part of the township.
Thanks, Jeff. I guess we can go around or just entertain a motion. I know I've read all the RFPs, and since I've been involved, certainly had very good response with Great Valley and very competitive. I think we reached out to see what was available in the market and make sure we were, you know, spending our tax dollars wisely, and seemed to be very competitive. I don't know, others have comments?
I agree with, I look down too, Dave, and I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I think Joe's done a great job, Joe Ogaskey, and again, I think if we want to make a change, I think, again, maybe we put another RFP out next year. But I think for this year, I just think we stick with Great Valley and then tell the others that, you know, there might be an RFP coming in the future.
I still believe that we need to look at them and foresee what's out there and with the fees. They spend a lot of money, and I like Joe, there's nothing wrong with the work that they do at all. And they've been here a long time, but sometime it's time to take a different look and see if there is any improvement as far as our costs. We're spending a lot of money, and, I mean, we have money now in the bank, but we don't want to keep spending more and more and more.
Did you review the? Michelle, I mean, I got a question for Michelle. Did you review all the RFPs and all the price fees?
That's what I was going to ask.
I don't think they've got them.
Yeah, we all got them.
We know.
Yeah, we all got copies of them.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe was one of, Joe, Great Valley was one of the lowest, and, you know, the service has been good. So I think that was what my comment was, that we, you know, we went out to see, you know, what was out there, and it's like, hey, we're very competitive here. So that was my comment. I don't know, Joe, or anyone else?
Well, all the RFPs, I thought were very, very well qualified. There really wasn't a cost discrepancy, and obviously, we ran into just all types of issues with COVID. And then with Jeff getting in there from an administration standpoint, getting his team in place, that we really weren't pushing a whole lot of additional change. We were struggling just to stay afloat with being short-staffed. I am a firm believer, though, that we continue to look at all of our services on a yearly basis. I think it's important to do so just for checks and balances. But at this point in time, based on the responses from administration, the recommendation would be to stay as is.
Jeff, you said we need a motion?
I think it'd be best to do a motion just stating that you are not making any changes to the engineering services and just authorize the manager to notify these other applicants.
Make a motion to make no change on the engineering selection for the township and to authorize the administration to contact the other three or four vendors that put in bids for the RFP process. Thank them for giving us a bid.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Michelle, you were opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
And Michelle, can we get, Jeff, can we get Michelle the responses?
We have, we're going to forward them, we all, yes, yeah, we all got them.
I know we all got them, I just want to make sure that she got them.
Yeah. New business. Item number one, discussion on township trick-or-treat date establishment. Laurie, I guess that might be you.
Sure. So traditionally, every year, the board establishes. Sorry about that. So traditionally, every year, the board does establish an official trick-or-treat date for the township. I'm sure some of you remember from last year. It was set for one night on Halloween from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. Now, last year, we did change the date to accommodate, there was an expectation of bad weather, so we did change the date. So I've got a lot of questions this year. Obviously, with COVID, people are wondering if trick-or-treat is going to be established in the township, if it's going to be allowed. I've done some research, seen some other places, some have. I've done some research, seen some other places. Some have just set the date. Some have canceled. Uh West Reading Borough canceled their trick-or-treat date. Uh most places that I've seen have at least established a date. Uh now, I did review and I forwarded to the board, the CDC did release guidance last week on ways to trick-or-treat safely. Uh while they're not encouraging people to trick-or-treat in the traditional methods that we all have become accustomed to, they have put out guidance to um inform people of ways that they can trick-or-treat safely if they choose to do so. And of course, if you don't want to, if you don't, you can turn off your light, just like every other, every other year. But they did make some recommendations on some alternative ways to trick-or-treat safely. So at this point, we're just asking uh the board to decide if you'd like to cancel trick-or-treat, if you'd like to set a date, uh or if you'd like to um some, do some combination of the two. So just open for discussion at this point.
Is the school doing anything? Next door school for the kids?
Uh, I don't know. I think usually they do a trunk-or-treat, but I'm not sure about this year if they're doing it.
They're not doing it for the whole school district. That might be nice if they're doing something, if they have a safe trick-or-treat, that maybe we could um donate some money for candy for them, but um I don't think that with this COVID that they should go door to door.
But I don't think, I don't think we're gonna be able, I don't think we're gonna be able to police or enforce that, obviously. So I think we should just name it October thirty first, it's Halloween, as we always do. This way, at least it'll eliminate confusion. I think if you don't name a date, Michelle, you're gonna have Halloween go on forever.
I don't think, I not that we name a date. I just said that we need to find um someplace safe for them to go because I know a lot of people are talking that they're not gonna open their doors because of the COVID uh problem and the kids in mass or no mass and uh so.
The um program at the school you're talking about is run by a club. And at this point, the student clubs have been slow to get started because the advisors are teachers. And the teachers have plenty of challenges ahead of them without the clubs. My wife does uh fall show and she's just getting started this week. So I I think it's safe to say that they won't have a program, especially since they aren't allowing kids in the building.
My virtual graduate. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I really like the document you you put together with the different options. I mean, I I think, yeah, if we do nothing, it's not good, but if we say October thirty first, let residents know, have your light off if you don't want people practice safe practices and I really like the idea of where I think it was in that document of suggesting something around a drive-through through the highway administration building, social distancing and providing something for the residents that we can contribute to and you know, in combination with those two, but just get it out there and inform residents that it is from whatever five to eight or nine or whatever we decide on the one night. And if you don't have your light on, please don't go to those doors.
I I have a question. Do we have any liability by naming a night?
No, no, you don't.
That was going to be my question, Greg.
Yeah, my my fear with not naming a night is that, you know, it could be three, four days and people.
Yeah, I think, I think you're opening, you're opening for chaos if you don't name a night.
I think people expect it to, it just, my feel was that it would create some confusion. People are asking if trick-or-treat is happening and um if they don't say anything.
I think the scale back, Laurie too, and the rest of the board is that in the past, we've done two nights.
Right.
Um last year, we did one night and then it became a rain and then we did another night, but we've had two nights and one night, I think. The 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 compromise this year is keep it one night.
Right. And I'd also, I'd be happy to, and I think I mentioned it in my memo, but I um I can post all of the CDC guidance on our website or at least put a link to it so that parents, if they're looking for um the the guidance out there for how to do it safely, we can have that readily available if people aren't sure where to find it.
That'd be great. That'd be cool. Is it a Friday or Saturday, the thirty first?
It's actually Saturday.
You know, Laurie, something else maybe we could look at is, we haven't talked about it yet, but your Halloween program.
Yes.
Maybe we can have just a small uh sheet of paper with that information that we can hand out that night to parents as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Um yeah, I can put a link to it. We did talk about um in the gift bags that we're hoping to receive enough donations for to be able to hand out that we could put some information in there as well. And I will, if the board um is happy with that event idea, then we'll start promoting it. I haven't put anything out there yet because I wanted to see what the general sense was before we started promoting that event to the township.
All right, just a question as far as you were talking about, it's like a drive-through, correct?
Yeah.
We, did we talk to the chief and Clarence and as far as traffic control and we we feel that that it can, it can be controlled?
We did discuss that and we uh intend to ask the fire police, they're always very helpful with us for the event, so we expect uh we're hoping to have them participate so that we can direct people out and we're we're talking a one-way loop. Um we we're napping this out on Friday, so we we've got that uh under consideration. We did talk to the chief about it and we'll involve him in all of the plans as we're creating the traffic patterns within.
Laurie, I'm just curious, why did you choose there rather than the promenade?
Well, frankly, because we want to be able to decorate the entire interior of the garage to create kind of a cooler experience of driving through rather than just driving through open air. It gives us some more space to decorate. Um plus, if we have bad weather, we wouldn't have to cancel.
Okay.
A lot of place to hang things on to.
Yeah.
Really make sure the fire department's involved too.
Yes, absolutely.
Because they always, you know, love to do the community stuff, so they'll, 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 they'll love this idea.
Yeah, we're hoping to have every, we're hoping to have a lot of participation.
I would, I would be in favor, I would be in favor of that if we can do it. We feel that we can do it safely and then also too, naming the night, as long as there's no liability. Along with sharing the information from the CDC. I mean, there's just so many unknowns. And we know that a lot of places have already canceled. I believe you said West Reading and I think I saw another one. But if we can do anything for the community, kids, I think it would be a good idea.
I I really look forward to, so forward to Halloween.
Agreed.
You got a lot of kick out of Michelle.
Laurie, you have, you have what you need?
I think we need.
I'll make the motion to uh establish October thirty first as trick-or-treat night for the township. I think that's the only motion that we need and then the logistics for the other stuff could just be part of the process.
Time on it, John?
Uh yeah, I think it's five to eight or five to nine, Laurie. Do you want to correct me?
We did five thirty to nine.
Five thirty to nine. We'll, we'll keep it the same. Joe and Michelle got it.
Joe got it.
No. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number two under new business approval of the twenty twenty months special budget meeting dates.
Laurie, can you leave the agenda up, please? Thank you.
Um I think this is self-explanatory. I think there's different groups go on different days. Uh I think this was just reserving the dates. We'll see if anyone had a major problem with it. Uh any comments, Jeff, or?
Uh yeah, should we, we just um, we we want to get the board to agree to these these dates. We moved the time up to six PM to get them started because they may go, you know, a little bit later. Um we also do need to advertise these um meetings. That's why we have it on the agenda. And um moving forward, we we will treat them the same as we treat our current public meeting. Um we will get as much information out early as possible the week before and we will then um put, put that out on on the website and we will um do a Zoom meeting similar to what we have right now. Uh public comments can be, can be put in um ahead of time, the same as a general meeting. And uh hopefully, we'll be able to get the input from, from the residents.
Thanks, Jeff. You need a motion forward to set these dates or to advertise or both?
Should we discuss them now first then?
Uh, go ahead.
I, I did, yeah, the second is um, I can't make the second.
You mean the fifth?
The second date?
November, November second. November second, I can't make.
Election night eve, he's running around proudly.
I'm doing Florida, actually. Hopefully, a a victory party, maybe not.
Is there an, an alternative? Could we go later that week?
I mean, you know, I mean, I could, you guys could go without, you know, I don't want to screw up just for one person. I mean, four is fine. I I could catch up and give you my notes, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, we've been, yeah, we should.
I think, I think, I just want you to know that I won't be there the second. I just want that to be, to be known.
Anyone else?
It's scheduled to be the country club, the library, and the fire department.
You heard that, John? You're okay with it?
I mean, I could go with you, Dave, on my thoughts. I mean, I'll just coordinate with you. I think you keep the dates. I just want to let you know that I won't, yeah, I keep, I'll keep these three dates and I'll miss the second, but I'll keep in touch with you as to my questions and comments.
Okay.
And I'm good, I'm good for those as of now, Dave.
Fine, okay.
Okay. Jeff, Jeff, do you need a, you need a motion here or?
A motion to accept these dates so we can advertise them.
Greg, Greg, are you good with all three?
Yeah, that's fine for me.
I made a motion to um advertise the special budget meeting dates. October fifth, October nineteenth, November second, twenty twenty, at six o'clock PM.
To be held virtually? Can we just add that in? If that was the plan.
Sure. Is that okay, Michelle?
Well, that, people can't comment then as we're talking. How are we gonna do that?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not going if it's, it's not virtual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we keep these virtual.
Yeah, we already said meetings through October would be virtual, so we'd be changing that.
I would say, uh Michelle, that we'll handle the public comment the same way that we've been doing with people submitting them ahead of time and we'll make sure that they're read out. Um and I'll make sure to organize them so that they're read in advance of you discussing the top, the topics. Um and before the presentations, if that's relevant, and then we can always ask for, and Jeff and I kind of discussed this. Nothing is going to be really decided at each of these dates, so if something comes up, if somebody submits a comment or a question after the fact, we can put them together so that it can be addressed at the next meeting. So that the comments are answered publicly.
A good point, Laurie, that these are just their initial reviews. It's not the finalization.
Right.
Correct.
Laurie, will the, will the corresponding, the documentation be available beforehand for the community's sake?
Yes, I would, traditionally, we've done that, so yes, I would say.
And that, that's important, especially in this, in this environment where there can't be comments during or questions that 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 information is available. Obviously, the sooner the better. However, everyone has the opportunity to review it and then send in their questions or comments.
Yep, we would, we will continue to post everything as early as possible, which we.
I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Now, I'm gonna go back to what Dave said, that um we're gonna stay virtual to the end of October.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll vote to it.
Well, I didn't say we were changing in October. I'm saying that's what we voted on previously. We voted on that about two months ago or a month ago. Does anyone recall?
Yeah, we voted to have uh the meetings through October to be virtual. We didn't say anything about the November, December. We said we'd decide when we got to it.
We should probably put it on the agenda for next meeting then, because we'll have to advertise where, even where it's gonna be.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, for, for November going forward. Yes, correct. Are you, Jeff, you're good with that? I don't worry. Okay.
Again, I just state my mind that um the public are entitled to come to these meetings and there's no reason we can't uh find a place where we can go and they're, they're entitled to come. And um everybody else are, are doing it a fast and I just uh think it's holding back the public from getting uh being able to hear things firsthand and being able to comment. And that's all I'm gonna say for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Michelle. We have a first and a second. Second, Michelle, if you are amending your motion to include these meetings as being virtual. Are you pulling back your motion?
I'm pulling back my motion, yeah.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we set the dates of October fifth, October nineteenth, and November second uh for budget meetings that will be held virtually beginning at six PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, but. I understand, Michelle, but I think any of us, when we come to these meetings and we have this next discussion, if someone wants to bring forward, you know, a meeting location that would take care of everything and would work, feel free to bring that forward. I think we've not found that yet.
Okay.
All righty. Item number three under new business. Discussion on delinquent sewer account balances and policy on penalty waiving.
Jen, do you want me to start this discussion?
Why don't I just start, review the accounts receivable balance that I had put together, some of the, the data that I put together and then um I think that would make more sense, and then you can talk about options.
I agree. Okay, terrific.
Uh Laurie, can you put up the um? So as everyone knows, we sold the sewer plants um October of twenty nineteen. Uh we continue to have an outstanding accounts receivable balance or many outstanding accounts receivable balances for prior wastewater charges. Um I put together some information, which I believe you all received and it was posted to, uh actually, it was not posted to the website. It will be posted to the website after I review it. Um Laurie's getting there. Sorry.
Technical.
So we were looking to review the current balances tonight, just kind of give you a snapshot. I'm not sure anybody has ever seen this of what the accounts receivable balances looks like uh for the township. And then I had asked Liz to kind of go over some options, and I can tell you what we've currently done to collect these balances. And then I was hoping Liz could go over the options that the township has to try and collect more of these balances. So as you see on the left side, we have sewer and recycling fees that are outstanding. For the sewer is a million one thirty-four, as you see there. Uh recycling is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um any outstanding also receives a five percent penalty every quarter. Any unpaid outstanding receives a five percent penalty each quarter. So as you see there, we have penalty dollars that have built up over many years of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, leaving us a total AR balance of about a million seven currently. These numbers were as of um the twenty-third of of September. So sixty-seven percent of the balance is principal, about thirty-two percent of the balance are penalties from people um not paying for any family matter. There are seven hundred and forty-one delinquent accounts. We have approximately ten thousand sewer accounts. So about seven percent of people um have not cleared up their base quarter balances from prior. Uh the average account balance is about two thousand dollars. Um I did remove, if you look on the right-hand side, I have a breakdown there of the balances. We have one very large commercial account, which I was. We have one very large commercial account, which owes us a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, we actually have a lien on that property, and we're working through getting collection on that account. I didn't want that balance to skew the, um, the, the average account balance, so I removed that from that, um, that information there. So the average residential account balance is about two thousand dollars that, that folks owe us. Um, I broke it down by the balances on each account, so those folks that owe less than five hundred dollars, there's two hundred and fifty-seven of them, um, with a total of fifty-six thousand dollars, so those people, it's one to two years old, it could be the final bill they haven't paid, it could be the final few bills they haven't paid. And we get up to five hundred to a thousand dollars, it's ninety-nine accounts for seventy-one thousand dollars. Those folks have not been paying their bills for approximately two to four years. Uh, as you see there, a thousand to twenty-five hundred, those also three to five-year-old balances, a hundred and fifty-six of them, and it goes up from there. You can see we have thirteen accounts that have over ten thousand dollars in balances. Those folks have not paid their sewer bills in ten year, in excess of ten years. Um, so these are not new bills, as you know, these, um, some of these folks have not ever made a payment in our system, some folks have made limited payments. Um, before we sold the wastewater plants, we kinda took some proactive measures, and we put liens on folks' houses, on properties, where they have a balance of over a thousand dollars, so the fear was that going forward, because we didn't own the plant anymore, may not be contacted by the title companies when ownership transferred. So for those with very significant balances, um, a thousand dollars over, we did place liens on people's houses, so that when they do a title search, they will see that there's money owed to us, and they will definitely come and, um, resolve that in, in the ownership transfer. People that have balances less than a thousand dollars, we currently do not have any liens on their houses. Um, we've been sending reminders out monthly to folks, um, statements to show their current balance, it has, um, stirred some some payments, uh, we've been, in the beginning, we got about a hundred thousand dollars the first couple of months, we're still getting about thirty to forty thousand dollars of payments each month, but it is slowly trickling in, as you can see. Um, other than that, we've not done too much, um, other than sending out reminders, the statements, and also the liens. Sometimes when you do file a lien on somebody's property, it does, um, get them to want to make a payment or to resolve that balance, so we have received, um, many payments in full from filing those liens, but as you can see here, we still have significant work to do. Anyone have any questions about the numbers before I kinda pass it off to Liz to discuss what our options are?
Yeah, uh, one question, Jen, is how many people of this seven hundred and forty-one are currently in monthly payment plans?
Uh, that would be very difficult for me to figure out off the top of my head. Um, we do have people making payments, um, we're constantly getting fifty and hundred-dollar checks, some eighty-five-dollar checks, um, but those general, smaller balances I would say the, the less than twenty-five hundreds, but, um, our system, our billing system is not the most user-friendly system in the world, so it would take a lot of data diving to figure that out, unfortunately.
Jen, question. What is the cost to file a lien on a property?
The cost is fif, we pay to the court fifty-eight dollars to file a lien, of course, there is attorney's fees involved, and we just passed over, um, an ordinance, uh, a meeting or two ago, stating that when we do file liens in the future, or do collection efforts, that we can add those balances, we can add those fees to the balance.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Liz, on these, on these liens, are they valid for five years? And then have to be revived, or are these twenty-year liens?
These liens, um, are, they do not have to be revived, unless you update them with further amounts that are due. So penalty, like, if you have increasing amounts of penalties that have to be added in late fees, then we advise the township to update those liens so that you get the amount when the house is sold and ownership is transferred. But there's other ways, um, that you can go about to collect these amounts, which we're gonna talk about tonight, and I can go into. What we do with some of our municipal clients that have balances on residential accounts of one thousand dollars or more, we file D J actions against those people individually. What that does is, it, you know, the, it gets the person's interest, because you're not just filing a lien on their real estate, you're now going after them personally. So if they don't show up at the D J, which typically they, it will push them to pay off their remaining balance before the district justice, but if we do get a judgment against them at the D J, then we can execute on that judgment, and a sheriff can go to their property and levy on whatever they have, um, in their household, you know, so that it can go to a sheriff's sale. And that really gets, um, payments going to the municipality, because once the people, you know, have the sheriff come in to their house and start levying on their property, cars, T Vs, et cetera, they call the township immediately to try to set up some sort of payment plan, or immediately pay the balance off that's owed. So we're very successful in doing those types of actions in other municipalities. And since you can't shut the water off, because, you know, you don't have, you know, the sewer and water now connected, it's a very good, um, thing that the municipality can do to, you know, get more money in and get your, your balance down. And our attorney's fees are now included in that, because we had the township enact an ordinance, uh, a few weeks ago. That will help you out with the liens also.
Is, is the max on that still eight thousand dollars, Liz, at the magistrate?
No, it's, um, it's twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve, twelve now, okay.
Yeah. Might be thirteen, I think, I know, I know it's twelve, it might have increased to thirteen, but I know it's twelve.
Well, that covers, that covers everything, except if you can.
Yeah.
I will say that I will be hesitant to tagging furniture, going back to my old collection days, uh, but I do understand that it can be um, a scare tactic, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, you know, if you wanna, may, we have some municipalities that have a policy that they do it on all accounts that are a thousand and over, and then we have some municipalities that only wanna do it on accounts that are over five thousand dollars, so you know, it, it, it's, it's something that you can do in addition to placing the liens on the property. So that's all I have, I, I think Jen wanted me to talk about that, so that you know that there's another option out there for collection.
Is this something where we, uh, would first notify people that if they don't contact us and make a payment plan, it will be referred to the district justice?
We can do that, um, in some of the municipalities, we just, you know, do a lien, and we don't give them notice of the D J action, because the lien has been outstanding for so many months or even a year, and then we just file the district justice's action and then are served with it. I mean, you can do a letter and say, look, you have, we have a lien, now we're gonna file a district action against you, it's gonna be personal, we'll be filing it within, you know, thirty days if you don't pay the amount in full, you can do it that way.
It's a, one concern I have with this, I agree we have to collect it, and I've paid my bills, there's no reason why everyone shouldn't pay their bills, but some of these, the people aren't gonna have this money, and then we're gonna be, end up piling up more fees on top of them. If we can encourage them to get in and make monthly payments, at least give them that opportunity.
I agree, Jeff, one of the things that I've noticed, and this, and you, again, I've been doing this quite some time, is if, if we continue to put fee on top of fee, the balance continues to go north and people stop paying. Um, Jen, I'm not quite sure what the accounting system is set up for that, but I would be, my personal opinion is if people have made arrangements to make payments, and they're, and they are making payments in good faith, at that point in time, I feel that the late fee should stop. These are residents, that's, again, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if the system can accommodate that, uh, we can reach out to the vendor and see if it can. My, my fear with payment plans, we had payment plans, uh, years ago before I got here, and based upon the records, I can see very few people actually follow through with them. So I'm fine setting up a payment plan, and then you know, stopping, if we can, stopping the late fees, assessing, you know, increasing on those, but as soon as they miss the payment, we're gonna need to take action, because it seems in the prior record that we find that a lot of people will set the plans up, but then they may make one fee, uh, one payment, or never make a payment, and they just assume that because they set up the plan, that they're going to forget about them, and, and they can sneak through.
Well, I'm in agreement there, I mean, I just think that, again, too, as residents, if we give them, if we give them the opportunity, and everyone is gonna have their own story, but if you give them an opportunity, they do fulfill the obligations of a payment plan, I just hate to see them continue to get dinged with fees, because they're already, for the most part, these, most people do wanna pay. Um, but they run into these situations. I have no issue using, uh, uh, the magistrate for, for additional judgments, and putting liens on cars and things like that, I'd be hesitant with personal property, but, um, uh, again, this is just my opinion, if someone is willing to make a payment plan, and they do live up to that agreement, I think that the late fee should stop.
I agree. As long as we're consistent, that has to be the rule for everybody, then.
Absolutely. They have to have a monthly plan or something.
I'm fine, as long as we keep it the same for everybody.
Jen, just, some people, a lot of the, the people that owe this money, I would bet a high percentage of them don't have it.
Yeah.
You know, so, you, you, they, they just keep getting in a bigger and bigger hole.
And then, Liz, I have a question, what happens then if it does go to the magistrate, does your office have to go there then?
We do, and our fee is, you know, added to that cost of the judgment. But a lot of times, we don't go, if the person doesn't show up, we don't have to go. Um, and that happens a lot, too.
True.
But another thing that you could do, i- if you're talking about payment plans, and that you wanna waive late fees, is that you could get some sort of form letter together, a form type of, of an agreement together, which would have the safeguards that if they missed a payment or two payments, that, you know, the township would take action, including a D J action, including the filing of liens, et cetera, that they could, you know, not miss a payment or two, so that the township would be safeguarded, um, and that they know this. But it, it might be a good idea, if you wanna start this policy of waiving late fees for, for people, that you send out a letter indicating that you are willing to enter into a payment plan agreement and waive, you know, future late fees and penalty fees if they're willing to enter into a payment plan. But that if they miss, you know, two months' worth of payments, then you, we could go after them legally, and the payment plan, you know, would be null and void after that.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would be in agreement with that, Liz, just to get to, there are residents, give them an opportunity, some of them may not even be aware. You would hope they are, but who knows? Uh, divorce situations, there's all different, there's all different types of stories, but um, again, too, if you give them the opportunity, they, they don't live up to their obligation of what they say, and I am all for going back and retroactivity, wait, late fees, no waiving, I'm just, that's just, that was just a thought I had, um.
Agreed, then, can you, can you verify, or do you know, do we, all, all outstanding balances over one thousand dollars, we currently have liens in place?
Uh, there are a handful of exceptions to that, but yes, I would say ninety-eight percent of the.
I like the idea of having basically, you know, maybe three things be done, one is a reminder for those that currently don't have a lien, that, you know, we can file a lien, can take D J action if they enter with a form letter, that if they enter into a payment plan, they can exclude that going forward. For those that already have a lien, you know, there's a different letter saying, hey, you know, we can take D J, we will take D J if they don't enter into, or take a good action, so I think that, I, I like a couple of those ideas, but give people final notice, basically, before taking that action. Well, I mean, a lot of good discussion, where are we, where are we headed?
We, I would recommend, of course, starting with the largest balances, and working our way through that, that list there, uh, so starting with the over ten thousands, and then we can work backwards.
So they would be the ones that probably already have a lien in place, so it's a, you know, a form.
Dave, almost, there are literally like only five accounts that are over a thousand dollars that don't have liens on.
Okay.
Okay, so like all of those there have liens on that are over a thousand dollars, so these people have liens, some of these people have multiple liens. If you owe over ten thousand dollars, you have not made a payment in probably ten to twelve years.
Yeah. So they, they probably, then, so then you'd be a letter that maybe Liz would prepare, basically. You know, unless you enter into a faithful, regular payment plan to pay these fees.
Right, and we have form agreements that we could, you know, uh, put together fairly quickly. You know, if the people were willing to do the payment plan agreement.
Hey, Jen, have we, have we ever done any research through title companies to see where exactly our lien stands, equity positions?
What do you mean? I'm not sure where you're going with this.
Okay, so let's just say that there's there's over ten thousand, there's a twenty thousand dollar down on us, and it's, uh, one, two, three Smith Lane. Have we ever researched to see what is owed on one, two, three Smith Lane, or whether or not we wanna exercise that judgment and go after that money?
No.
Okay. And that's, that's something to consider as well with larger balances, because you can, you can, you can get that research done by an abstractor, and, and Liz is aware of that, it, it doesn't cost you a lot of money, or if you really wanted to cherry pick larger balances, to be able to bring in some income, that will get people's attention.
Well, I feel like we need to treat people consistently. So if, you know, if we start with the over tens, we would have to go after all the over tens. Um, we don't wait, we don't write off any balances, I mean, if the property, the lien, the balance goes with the property, so it stays there until you sell your house, and then we get our money. Or until your state sells your house, so it's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
Um, my question would be, I would want to serve a payment plan minimum payments, 'cause I can foresee people who owe ten thousand dollars saying, I'll send you twenty-five dollars a month.
No, that's not gonna work, that.
Right.
Not, I mean, if you look at the top, top one hundred people that owe, between five thousand and ten thousand, or over ten thousand dollars, there's a hundred people there, and of that group, that's a total of almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a hundred people. Uh, averaging out to seventy-five hundred dollars, if we do want any type of payment plan, it has to be really significant in order to make it worthwhile, otherwise, we're gonna be doing a ton of paperwork and a lot of letters chasing after these people if they miss a payment, and that, you know, they owe seventy-five hundred, and they only wanna give twenty-five or fifty dollars a month, that's not reasonable, these people basically have thumbed their nose, unfortunately, at the system for five, six, ten years, some of these people probably have never made a payment in ten years' time, in order to, to rack up numbers of that, that, uh, that size, and that, that's not, unfortunately, it's not fair to the rest of the residents, and, and people who were in the sewer, um, uh, plan there, and were making these payments over the years, and we were floating them. So I think if we do go into some type of payment plan, it has to be something significant, start at the high-end ones, and maybe work your way down from there, um, and, and see if that, uh, if that starts to wake people up a little bit, and we get, start to get any, uh, action from some of these people.
Or would you, uh, what amount would you recommend, Jeff?
Um, if, if you're at seven, you know, averaging seventy-five hundred dollars, I would think that, you know, minimum twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-dollar payments, um, you know, that's, uh, you know, you look at what a lot of people make in car payments, they make car payments double that amount, um, you know, for their, for their car, they, they know that we can't turn off their sewage, um, and, and now that we don't own the system, their, their, their attitude, I'm sure some of them, their attitude is, fine, go ahead and lien me, I'm not moving, I'm not doing anything for another ten years, and then when I'm done, I know I'm gonna get X number of dollars less for, for my house. Uh, in the meantime, the township is out that money, and we're going through this process trying to, to track them and, and um, you know, up the liens each time, you know, every other year, or every year when penalties accrue, I mean, it, it becomes a lot of paperwork, a lot of work for us, so for, for those high number accounts, um, I would say, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars might be a reasonable amount to put them on a payment plan, and see what they, see if they agree, or, or balk, or. And see what they, see if they agree or, or balk or, you know, come up with something, an alternate plan. Um, we'll be willing to talk to them, but I think it has to be significant.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, right. I am too. And again, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at payment plans Jeff, I'm looking more at the smaller balances. They're the ones that, you know, you have somebody that owes seven hundred bucks, you work out a payment on age with them. Folks that are over ten thousand dollars, that's a little bit of a different animal.
Right, exactly. And, and a person that owes five hundred dollars or eight hundred dollars, no, um, I, I could see something more reasonable. They are really tight on money and they're trying to get a, you know, they're head above water. Uh, you know, yes, we, we don't wanna to hurt those residents, but somebody that owes, you know, seven hundred and fifty, seventy-five hundred dollars and hasn't made a payment in ten years, um, I, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy, uh, for someone like that in, in the big picture of this.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree too.
Yeah. So Jeff, maybe you and Jen and Liz can just put together the, I think we had a good discussion. I don't think we have to be specific here, but I, I think putting together, you know, some letters or whatever, being prepared to at least notify people that we can take DJ actions on their personal property as a next step and that we're willing to discuss.
Okay.
Everyone good with that?
Do you have what you need Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I think we do. I think, um, between the three of us, we'll come, we'll, we'll meet and discuss this and come up with, um, a format. And we'll report it back to the board of, you know, what level of, uh, money is owed and what letters will be sent. We'll, we'll, we'll lay out a, a game plan, uh, and get back to the board just to see, um, if you think it's agreeable. I, I think for the, for more, I've heard this evening, uh, for the most part, the board does agree that something needs to be done, but we're not gonna try and beat up on someone that owes a small amount. But someone that hasn't made any payments in ten years really deserves to get a wake-up call.
Yeah, and I can get you the sample payment plan agreements that we use in other municipalities for larger accounts and letters that we send, just to see if you can get some money to come into the township for those people that have been delinquent for many years.
Yeah. Liz, can you check and see? I don't know who does your abstract work. Can you just check and see what it'll be for a basic, just the calls for a basic title search, not title insurance, just what the calls would be for an owner search to see who owes what against their property?
Right, I can do that. Yep, no problem.
Good. All right, move on. Thanks everyone. Item number four under new business, uh, discussion on the twenty twenty-one Township Recycling Program. I know we got touch, cut short at the end of the year. We had only one option and we, we did that. We did not bid out for multiple things and it came back higher than we thought, but, you know, we had to put something in place, so now we wanna go out and I think and gather data on multiple options and see what the market is gonna be for twenty twenty-one. Jeff?
Yeah, we, we had a discussion, um, several of the staff and, uh, with, uh, the county recycling coordinator and, and talked about some options that are available out there to us. Um, when we bid this out, we bid it out that it would be weekly. Um, it's kinda difficult to go back, um, away from weekly, back to bi-weekly. But I think it's something that when we bid this out, I think we should put that option out there to, to see the, the the price structures of what's coming back. Um, they also suggested that we bid it out separately in terms of the collecting and the processing, um, that most likely we're going to end up getting, um, better pricing than lumping it all together. Uh, the, uh, the, the, the biggest issue that we're facing, um, is that the recycling market has completely dropped out. Um, it's actually costing the township money now for the recycled materials. Years ago, we were paid for the recycled materials, now we're paying them. The recycling market is, is gone. Um, actually, the, the glass that gets recycled, um, is not even being really accepted as recyclable material. It's being taken out of that recycled, um, uh, uh, chain and it's actually being crushed, mixed with other materials and being used as a cover for the landfills. So, uh, the fact that glass weighs a lot, it adds a lot of, uh, tonnage in there and we're getting charged for that. Um, and it, it's, it's almost better if people weren't recycling their glass. It would actually be saving a, a huge amount of money and that glass would still end up in the landfill where it's ending up now. Um, the other issue, when we bid this last year, we only got one, um, bidder on the actual processing of the materials. Apparently there was a staff changeover in one of the companies and they, um, they did not put any bids out, um, for, uh, for the recycling materials. So I think if rebidding it this year, we're hoping to get more than one bidder, um, for the, uh, processing and that may help lower the price a little bit. And, um, also the idea of possibly going to, to, um, bi-weekly versus weekly. Um, the, the dollar amount that the residents are charged has not increased, I believe, since, uh, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, two thousand and eight. Um, so, you know, it's, it's stayed at twenty dollars for, forever, which is, is kind of unreasonable. Um, to, to think that after all those years that the costs would not have gone up, um, even for the cost of collection, for the, the cost of gas and everything else, um, to, to do that work. Um, one of the things that was mentioned earlier, um, regarding, uh, that, you know, the township is ripping off residents or something to that effect. Um, the township is mandated to recycle. You must recycle these materials, um, by the, the state mandate. So it's not something that we could just ignore and, and say, we're not gonna recycle, just have it collected by, by your trash collector. Uh, we cannot do that. That's not legal for the township. So we do have to do this. Um, we, we definitely need to put out a new bid, uh, it's, and the staff, I think, recommended, um, in our discussion that we should put out, um, a, a multiple option, uh, to the bidders. Weekly, bi-weekly collection and processing and, um, uh, collection as separate bid items to, to get the most bang for our buck and, and see where that goes. Um, we, we can put this bid out and get that information before, hopefully before the end of the year. And, um, by doing so, we'll know, um, what, what we're looking at for next year in terms of, um, fees that the township may have to increase in order to somewhat cover the cost of recycling. Right now, we're, um, we're losing signi- significant amount of money. Um, Jen or Clarence, if I, if I missed anything, uh, from our conversation, chime in please.
Yeah, that pretty much covers it.
Yep, I agree.
Well, I, I've seen the past, uh, last week and I think it was one time the week before and I've received calls on it that they're just taking recycling and dumping it right in the trash truck. So it's not even going down to be recycled.
They do use a trash truck because we are single stream. There's no reason to use a recycling truck which has.
They don't want to do that.
Yeah, we're single stream, so everything goes in the same bin, so they put it in the most, uh, easily usable truck, which is a trash truck.
Well, they had other trucks before and if they.
Because we're dual stream. Dual stream means you have to separate your recyclables into the glass and the plastic versus the cardboard and then they need a, a truck that separates the two of them, but we are single stream. Everything goes in the same. So one truck with one bin is, is fine.
You can get a lot more in that, in a, in a regular garbage truck than you can in one of those trucks that have containers.
They're mix, they're mixing the trash with the recyclables, is that correct?
No, they're mixing all the recyclables together because that's what we have, that, and we are, we are single stream, meaning that all the recycling can go in the.
I, I understand what that means, but I saw in other people's songs, um, dumping it right in with trash, okay?
Dumping it in with recycling because Blazinski only collects our recycling.
I know, I have Bo- Belinsky for both trash and recycling and it's two separate trucks that come to the house on the.
Right, right. So, that's what I'm trying to say. I saw with my own two eyes that they picked up my recycling and they dumped it right in the trash can, in the trash truck, not the recycling truck, the trash truck. But I got phone calls from other people about it. And for some reason, somebody from St. Lawrence called.
They're using a trash truck to collect recycling. There is not trash inside of the trash truck. They're just using a truck that looks like a trash truck to collect recycling.
Yeah, that was, that was my.
That they pick it up.
Yeah, they, they, the trucks look exactly the same. I have two Belinsky trucks that pull up to the curb. One takes the recycling and the other truck takes the trash.
Correct. Tuesday and Friday they take, at least in my area, Tuesday, Friday they take the garbage, Thursday they take the recycling. So it's, it's a whole separate process, Michelle.
No, well, I have, I have the recycling and trash on the same day, so I see them come at different, at two different trucks, same thing.
Yeah, all Thursday.
Yeah, all Friday. But anyway, um, yeah, so.
And, uh,
I take a picture. We need, we need to be, yeah, we need to make sure that we tell the residents and I, and I told them what Jen says, you know, we need to make sure that we're not misleading the residents when they ask that question. So now, now you know, Michelle, tell them to educate.
I, I know what I saw.
Yeah, and if you see, I mean, I would take a picture. If you see them dumping your trash and your recycling in the same exact truck, then it's an issue. And we, we should record that.
Yes. And, um, we need to, if you're thinking about going bi-weekly, which, which is fine, probably the best way. There are certain times that there, um, grants can be applied for. And that's concerning the, um, cans. So someone should look into that and see if they can still apply to get more of the larger cans.
Clarence, I think we have a very significant.
We were on the whole trail. Yeah, that was done last year.
Yeah.
Well, all right, so you need, Jeff, you need, uh?
A, a motion authorizing the township to, um, go out to bid for recycling services.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for the township to go out, uh, and collect for services of collecting and processing on a weekly and a bi-weekly basis, um, to get that data.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Item number five under new business, consider execution of planning module for ten Santa Maria Drive subdivision. So Will?
Uh, yes, so this is a two-lot subdivision up off of Faber's Road. There is not public sewer up there, so the lot will need to have an on-lot system. The planning module was reviewed by LTL Consultants, who is our, uh, Sewer Enforcement Officer. They are recommending the township execute the planning module and send it off to DEP for final approval.
So Will, you just need a?
I need a, a motion for township staff to sign, um, the, uh, planning module.
I'll make a motion for township staff to execute the planning module for ten Santa Maria Drive subdivision.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Item number six under new business, consider approval of ten Santa Maria Drive subdivision final plan.
Um, so this is the same, uh, two-lot subdivision, uh, Township Planning Commission has reviewed it, um, and recommended approval as well as the, um, the township engineer has also, uh, produced a review letter. And I will refer any of the outstanding comments to Joe Rogowski.
We produced a review letter dated August thirty-first. Essentially, uh, it's just the signatures of the appropriate, um, certificates of ownership accuracy, um, as well as the signatures for the stormwater, uh, maintenance agreement and so forth. Those issues uh, would need to be, um, completed as part of the final plan. Approval, uh, we don't have any further comments, um, regarding this plan. The planning commission did review this at our, our regular meeting on the twentieth of September and the motion was to approve the plan uh, subject to the outstanding issues in our August thirty-first twenty twenty letter. Uh, the solicitor also prepared a, a, a resolution for final subdivision plan approval outlining those issues that need to be addressed, uh, for final plan approval for this evening by, uh, the Board of Supervisors. Thanks Jeff. We need a motion on this resolution?
Yes.
A move that we approve the, uh, final plan for subdivision of ten Santa Maria.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Thanks Jeff, thanks Will. Item number seven, zoning variance application, eight ninety-one Chauffeurs Road.
Uh, yes, so this property owner, um, lives up on the corner of Chauffeurs Road and Rugby Road. Um, they recently bought the property, they, uh, demolished the existing structure that was there, put on a modular unit. And they are requesting, uh, to put a detached garage, uh, there. Um, it is on the larger side, I believe it's fifty by, uh, thirty-six. Um, our zoning ordinance only allows a forty-foot, um, a maximum forty-foot length for detached garage, uh, garages in residential districts. Um, so they will be before the zoning hearing board tomorrow night. Um, the planning commission did review this and they did recommend, um, approval of the variance.
Thanks Will. So, I mean, typically we would, we would wait and we'd take no position, let it go before the zoning board.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is everyone in agreement?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Is that good Will?
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Item number eight. Under new business, approve resolution accepting deeds of dedication for roadways to be dedicated to the township by Exeter Associates. As you may recall, earlier this year, Exeter Associates approached the township on four streets or portions of streets that they are currently paying taxes. The township actually owns and maintains these streets, but they were never formally recorded in the courthouse. So therefore, the tax assessment office is issuing tax bills for, for these streets in, in order to correct the situation and to officially have the township on record, uh, own, own and maintain these streets, which was, as I said before previously, we are already maintaining them. There are four streets in question on, uh, that the township solicitor prepared a resolution for adopting as for public use. The first one's Claire Drive from Fairview Chapel Road to Sunset Manor Drive. Dolphin Place, which is from Fairview Chapel Road to Claire Drive, a small portion of Sunset Manor Drive and a block of Philadelphia Avenue, which is from Red Lane to an unopened street that has been referenced and indeed is known as Y Missing Boulevard. All four of these streets are currently open for public use and the township has been forming maintenance. This evening, uh, we're looking for action to be taken by the Board of Supervisors to formally, uh, accept the offer of dedication for these four streets.
So really nothing changes for us Jeff?
Correct. Actually, it's more of a formality. For whatever reason, years ago, these never got recorded in the courthouse. It's a separate uh, place that these streets are, are located, so the tax assessment office has just been continually issuing tax bills to Exeter Associates since they were the original developer. This will clean, um, correct that matter. Um, however, we as a township have been owning and maintaining those roads for quite some time, so yes, it's just a, a formality.
And so we've been collecting local fuels on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure you had to do a lot of work on them. That's all, thank you.
So no more work for Clarence?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to accept the offer of dedication of these four parcels of road.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Uh Liz, do we need one or two motions because it's two resolutions?
You can do, there there are two separate resolutions, um so I would recommend doing two motions. For each resolution because the the roads are identified on each resolution.
Okay, so I made one for the four roads, so we have to break them up into two.
Right.
Dave, the first resolution has um Claire Drive, Dolphin Place, and a portion of Sunset Manor Drive. And then the second resolution contains the the block of Philadelphia Avenue.
Okay, I will, I will amend my. Offer or my, the resolution to accept the. Offer of dedication for Sunset Manor, Claire Drive, and Dolphin Place?
Correct.
Second, they changed.
I'm your second uh, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So we need a new motion then for Philadelphia Avenue?
Correct.
Make a motion to agree the resolution of. Deeds of dedication for Philadelphia Avenue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry, for catching up. I know you told me you're clear, I forgot. Item number nine, authorize bid advertisement for twenty twenty one, the two minutes seal coat and micro surface projects.
Yes, uh we have uh for next year's budget, uh I have three streets for the uh. Oil, for the co- seal coat, and I have numerous uh streets that I would like to uh. Do some micro surface on. Um I'd like to put it out on bid so I can. Put, we can get a much better budget number that way for next year.
Thanks, Brian. I move we'll authorize bid advertisement for the two thousand twenty on the two minutes coat, seal coat, and micro surface projects.
I'll second.
Any further, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thanks, Clarence. Item number ten, discuss the purchase of Kubota tractor for RCC in the amount of thirty thousand eight ninety thirteen cents. So Larry gonna cover that or?
Yes, I can. Uh basically, we talked earlier this year about the. Uh the country club Kubota tractor hold off as long as we can. The tires are no longer holding air. Which is creating an issue, especially being turf tires. If we would purchase tires just for this piece of machinery with all the other problems it has, we're talking just four thousand dollars in tires. So I asked if we could put this back on, since it is a budgeted item. Of replacing that two thousand Kubota with the twenty twenty Kubota.
Alright, question. Do we use this for anything else too, or is this just?
Well, the one that we are purchasing now, uh we could uh do a lot of things with, like for instance, if we would go and have to uh. Overseed our fields and stuff like that with the turf tires on it, we could actually do that a little bit better than the cleated tires that we normally use on. Our other tractors that we do have. It is a size bigger, like I said, and. It could be used for multiple purposes.
Alright, so we can use it for other things. Okay, that's all I was concerned with.
Yep.
Yeah, for the parts, I'm not in favor of a twenty year old piece of equipment sinking that kind of money into.
Yeah, as long as you can use it for other parts and I'm I'm fine.
I'll make a motion to purchase a Kubota tractor for Ring Country Club in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and thirteen cents.
Someone tell me where that is in the in the budget. I couldn't find it.
It's actually budgeted in the golf fund, but we budgeted to finance it.
Budgeted to finance it, okay.
Budgeted to lease it, so that was going to be my question. Where is the, where is the purchase coming out of which fund?
I guess my question is, why, with with the money we have, why wouldn't we just purchase it out there? I believe we had a discussion. On another piece of equipment earlier this year.
Well.
It was the equipment fund.
Yeah, we we don't want to. Dipping into, we can't keep dipping into that because that's for the fire engines and everything.
No, it's not for the fire engines, John. Equipment fund is for township vehicle.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that, the the million dollar equipment, the fire apparatus fund is for the fire fund.
Yes, it was a five million dollar fund that was.
The other equipment is for the, is for the equipment fund, so we can't keep dipping into that. Because we did that for, we made a mistake by doing that on the tractor at the country club.
That was a mistake, Joe.
Yes.
It's. Equipment. What's that? The township owns the equipment, if it can be used for parks as well. I mean, it's township asset. So I guess my question to Jen would be, you know, what are, I guess, again, I would get the rates. I'm in favor of paying three or four percent when we have money sitting in our fund.
Uh I can get the rates for you and we can talk about it at the next meeting. Larry, would that hold us up too much or I'm I'm sure you could put it on order.
Yeah, we can put it on order because it will take some time to get. Um this machine is actually a thirty five thousand dollar machine and then with the discount. It came with the state contract, came brought it down to thirty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, but uh we can actually order it a while. I'd say it'd take us about six weeks to receive it anyways, so if we want to hold off and talk about payments or purchasing it to the next meeting, that's fine also.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of purchasing a piece of equipment. We need to put money into a twenty year old tractor, four thousand makes no sense at all. But um I will tell you what, right now, you're better off purchasing than financing if the cost of finance exceeds the cost you're earning on the money sitting in the fund. So, but we can discuss.
Yeah, I have no problem with with buying it, I just couldn't find it a budget, like that's that's why I asked and. I also couldn't find um um where the the food and beverages are coming for. Uh to pay for the ball shop, um for the ball shop. I mean, I'm making money, no problem, I just don't know where it's coming from and.
They're listed, Michelle, under the pro shop. Right now, we're gonna try to maybe separate that when the budget comes up, but if you look under pro shop, they've purchased.
I just, just looking at the budget and trying to figure some stuff out. Thank you.
And so it sounds like, okay, go ahead and purchase it, Larry, and then we'll just have the option at a, at a future meeting on how to, how to finance it or how to pay for it.
Okay, and then I would suggest if we could sell the old one after the new one shows up on municipal bid. And if we would take the money from the equipment fund, uh instead of the money that we sell from the equipment going to the country club. Is it an option to maybe replace it back into the equipment fund?
Well, let's, let's have Jen come up with a, with with what she thinks the best plan is. Now, we're just looking at uh purchasing the tractor. Do we need a separate motion then to sell the old?
Let's finish. Probably. Greg, you made the motion to purchase. Uh Joe, you made the second on that?
No, no, Joe, I did.
Okay, you made the second, well, so let's do that one first. So any further discussion on purchasing the piece? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. So then the second one is, yes, municipal park portion.
So I'll make a motion to sell the old model on municipal.
I'll second that as well.
Thanks, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And at the next meeting, we'll have the options from Jen.
Where the money comes from.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think Jen Jen made the point there that either way, well, not either way, whether we capitalize it, I don't know how we do that. Jen can explain that later, or if we take out a loan, I think we. Jen, it factored in the budget for leasing or financing the piece of equipment. So I would just look at that option.
That is fine, we'll do.
Thanks. Item number eleven, authorization to proceed with HVAC repairs to Redding Country Club. We talked about this some, but yeah, Jeff, you might want to cover it again, Jeff or Clarence?
Sure. Um, we got the final written proposal from Landis Mechanical Group. Uh they are on state contracts, so there was. Um, previously, the board authorized to go ahead with state contract vendor rather than going through the the expense and time. Of a full bid process. The dollar amount that they came in, that is all inclusive, um. A total price is two hundred and ninety nine thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety five cents. The original price, as was mentioned earlier, um was um established four years ago. Uh since that time, two major factors have changed the the price of this project. One being the cost of materials, uh HVAC equipment obviously uh goes up every year. Uh it's 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 one of those types of things that just always goes up. Um there's no, no way around that. The other issue is. The fact that the size of this job, uh over twenty five thousand dollars, puts it into a prevailing wage rate calculation. As per state regulations. Um prevailing wage rates are obviously uh pretty high. This job was put together using. Prevailing wage rates. Um in the past four years, those rates obviously have also gone up significantly. Um so combine those two things together and the the price over a four year period um did go up uh just. Just around fifty thousand dollars from the initial estimates. Um they recalculated how to do this project. Simply because of the um the difficulty of getting the old unit out. And um bringing the new unit in. Uh the original plan called for totally demolishing the. The old unit internally in the building and taking it out piece by piece. Um and then rebuilding the platform area that um the new unit would sit on, because right now it sits. Right on on roof rafters, uh which is not not a good situation to work on it and it's, it doesn't meet code. Uh they will have to put a new subflooring in uh to hold this unit in place. Um. What what is different from their initial proposal on this one is, on the backside of the building, they will be removing one of the large window units there. And using a boom lift to actually move quick pieces of the equipment in and out through that opening. Um and then they will be replacing the window back in its original place, recocking it, resealing it. And painting the the area and taking care of it all around that that window. Uh that's the difference. But they said in actuality, that does save even more money than if they had to dismantle the entire brand new. Unit that that, when it comes, it's it's all together. They would have to then take it all apart and carry it up piece by piece. Um if any of you are familiar with the upper area of that Redding Country Country Club, this is above the ballroom area, it's very difficult to access. Unlike a a more modern building that has a rooftop unit, they come in with a crane, just drop it in place. That's not the case with this his situation. Um so, um no matter what is done with that building, no matter who operates that building or anything. This ha- has to get done. The current uh equipment up there is failing. Um it's uh does not meet any type of uh code any longer. Um and. Um it's all recommendation that we move ahead with this. In terms of the the payment for this, this project, once if. Once we authorize this, um if the board does so this evening, we'll give them the notice to proceed. Um we can notify them tomorrow. They then still have to place the order for the equipment and get geared up to to start doing this project. It, the temperature is right um to do this work. You can't do it in the dead of winter, it'd be too cold. And things will be freezing, and we'll have to supplement heat there. You can't do it during the summer because it's so god. Uh god awful hot up in that area. So basically, you know, now is the time to do it. And with our hopes of opening up the operation next spring, we really want to get this this project done. Um. We're looking at paying off the initial phase of this project with the money that's in the budget to two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh whatever's remaining in that initial two hundred and fifty thousand, I think if anything was spent a little bit out of there for other minor repairs. We will you go up to that dollar amount and then the remaining balance we will budget for and pay out in two thousand twenty one. Um, the project mo- most likely will not be be completed until probably early December. Um so in terms of of timing of payment, of a final payment would not be actually made until twenty twenty one anyway, so. It makes sense to be able to do it this way and budget the additional money uh out of the capital fund. To pay to make the final payment um and complete the project. That all being said, if the board is so inclined, uh a motion uh would be needed to authorize. To uh approve Landis Mechanical to do the HVAC replacement project for. Two hundred and ninety nine thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety five cents.
And this, just so you guys know, this is actually four units, not just one. These are four units that you're replacing up there and for for any of you that have not been up there, you should go up there sometime. And you would realize the difficulty they're gonna have putting this thing up there. It's gonna be a challenge.
I'm gonna make a motion to proceed with the HVAC repairs to Redding Country Club with Landis Mechanical. In the amount of two hundred and ninety nine thousand nine hundred. And how many dollars, Jeff?
Seventy five.
Nine hundred and seventy five dollars and.
Ninety five cents.
Ninety five cents.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Clarence. Department reports, um Liz?
All right, I was on mute. I have nothing at this time unless you have any questions for me.
Steve?
Uh, just a reminder, uh we've been receiving an uptick in fraud related cases, uh complaints at the police department. Um these news cases involve a sort of new fraud that we haven't seen yet. Um township residents are receiving emails. Um from Amazon or Netflix advising them that their uh accounts have been suspended for a a lack of payment. Or that their credit card information is no longer valid. Um they're being instructed to click on the link within the email to update their financial information. Um once they do this, um then uh. Now the people committing the fraud have their financial information and have been uh attacking their accounts, uh making unauthorized withdrawals. Um in one case, um a victim uh gave uh information, gave approval for this uh individual, the suspect to uh. Basically hijack uh their computer and ransom was demanded with uh about five thousand dollars. So they were instructed to go to Target and buy five thousand dollars worth of gift cards or their our computer. Um and their fi- and their accounts would be attacked further. So uh just as a reminder, if you receive an email from Amazon. Or from Netflix, if you have those such services indicating that your account information uh is no longer va- valid. Or needs to be updated, um please call established numbers uh for those uh for those services. And update your information that way. Uh just don't, please don't click on the link and uh update it within an email. That's it.
Thank you. Joe? Uh everything I have uh was addressed under the agenda this evening. Joe, Clarence?
Uh, yeah, for the last couple of weeks, uh if you've been down around the Farming Ridge Park area, you see that uh. We've been replacing a lot of sidewalk. Uh so far, we're right around five hundred feet. And we have about a hundred to go, maybe a little less. Also, at the end there where the sidewalk and curb was never finished. By the contractor, um we also put in a hundred feet of curbing as well. Uh, we've been putting in a new section of the Trout Run Trail, the. From, well, uh from Trout Run going into the trail. Uh we dressed that up, looks real nice. Um. Also, the entrance to Trout Run Sporting Complex, uh we've dressed that up as well. So that's what we've been doing last couple of weeks.
Great, thanks, Lawrence. Jeff?
Uh, just one item, uh an update on the Perkyomen Street uh Streetscape Project. Um. Because it is a pen dot road, there are. Um because it is a PennDOT road, there are certain requirements obviously that that we must be abiding by. Uh they are actually going out to bid uh right now for uh the two two portions of it under two different grants. Um they anticipate those will be awarded by the end of this year and work will start actually in January of twenty twenty one and proceed through the summer of twenty twenty one. The issue is that because of the type of work, uh they're going to have to do a lane closure. Um PennDOT's gonna require them to do that while they're doing curving work and everything. And as a result of it, they're going to shift the work to nighttime work uh during that period. Um if it's not being done at night, PennDOT would not approve the project to go forward. Um so uh they, you know, they, we just wanted to make everyone aware that when that project gets started in that area. It will be evening work from probably midnight to five AM and um the 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 question arose about noise, our current noise ordinance um that was updated does exempt um municipal and utility work um from the noise ordinance pro- uh provisions. So it is a permitted um uh project uh in terms of we it's not that we don't have rules, but we can um be exempt from that rule because it is a public utility or a um roadwork project. So just to make everyone aware that when when that project starts, there will be evening work going on there. Um and uh we, you know, we'll address it with the contractors if there are some excessively crazy things going on. But uh for the most po- most part, it should not be um a major disruption in the area. Um I think that's all I had this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Public comment, Larry, we have non agenda items?
Yes. Um so this is, first one is from John Carmelo.
Virtual meetings, since neighboring townships are holding actual public meetings, why is Exeter still in virtual mode? Yes, there is a cost to going back public, but there is a bigger cost to an uninformed public. In addition, the technology used leaves much to be desired. Why are there no update notifications about ongoing projects, subject matter and such? At least once a month, you should provide status information about these open items. I, RCC food and beverage promenade, noise ordinance. This update can be done in five to ten minutes.
Any comments, Jeff, or, I mean, I think the promenade we have discussed, there's ongoing work and that'll be on a future agenda. What was the other one? Noise ordinance has been finalized?
Yeah, the noise ordinance was, has been approved. On the promenade, I spoke about that at the last meeting regarding um the uh KCBA architects are working on the feasibility study, which will be addressing the promenade center as a possible location to relocate the municipal building. So that NFOs was going out there. Um regarding the Redding uh Country Club food and beverage, we finally did receive the report from the outside consultant. Um myself and several board members and staff members um are are scheduling a meeting uh probably later this week uh or early next week to go over the the materials that we received and to uh work on developing how we're going to go forward with it. Um so, I mean, we we have been reporting on on some of these items. Um you know, in in my report and other various staff. Uh it's in terms of going to a virtual uh public meeting, a public uh in person meeting versus virtual. That that's, that is a board decision. I know there are constantly changes being made on the state level of what is and is not permitted. How many people can be at um at public meetings? And yes, there there are costs. Um and if we do not um get a a venue that is large enough and we happen to get a large number of people, well, that would exceed the number of persons allowed in the meeting. Uh then we'll have to turn people away and then we'll be um up against um scorn of that we are trying to hide something and not allow the the public uh there. The public is permitted to make their comments, which they have been doing. Um we're going to, obviously, um when we, when we're working on the budget. Um we're going to take all their comments, address them if we can at that time. And any comments that come in other times regarding the budget after the fact, after the presentation. We will address them at the next meeting. So we're we're working to try and accommodate as much public comment as as possible. Um we have only been receiving public comment from probably no more than five or six people since we have gone to virtual meetings. Um so it doesn't appear that uh there's a a great number of residents that are not being uh able to make their comments or or give their input uh for the public meetings. Um if the board chooses, um right now, we are scheduled for virtual meetings through October. If the board chooses to to uh go different than that, um different direction, um you can do so and the staff, we will uh work up some type of plan to see how we can possibly uh have a a public meeting. But that's, that's a board decision um to to be made, not the, not a staff decision.
Thanks, Jeff. Larry, wanna move on, unless anyone else has comments?
That was it, with the exception of uh Mr. Hughes' second comment that I played at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I think we covered that. Is there a reason to?
Unless you all would like me to replay it, I think about half of his comment was in regards to an agenda item.
Yeah, we're good. I think we heard it, I think we heard it already. I don't know why we need to re.
Anyone wanna replay?
Sorry, what was that?
I don't, I don't think we need to replay it if we, if we heard it already, I don't think we need to replay it.
Everyone good? All right, supervisor reports, um Michelle?
Hello, good thank Laurie Gatz for getting together all the material that I asked her. She did a superb job. Um I really appreciate it and I want her to know it. And uh Laurie went out of your way and I super really appreciate it. Like, what else to say? You're on top of everything. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm happy to help.
Thank you, Michelle. Um John?
I'm good. Nothing to add for the night. Thank you for the meeting day and running a good meeting again.
Thanks, John. Greg? Yeah, I just uh wanna share that this postcard went out about the electronic newsletter, Laurie again, we'll we'll have a Laurie love fest, I guess. Uh did a great job with this and we're close, we have close to nine hundred people signed up now for the electronic newsletter. So um she, Michelle, Jeff and I are gonna try to get together and talk about next steps. Either uh the end of this week or following week. Thanks, Greg. Yeah, it seems to be moving well. Um Joe?
Nothing additional. Good night, everybody.
Very good. Thanks, Joe. And myself, I have nothing to add. Just thank everyone for attending and participating and all the good effort. So thanks, everyone. Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, eyes have it.
Night, everyone. Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Good night.